All right, call this meeting to order September seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, good morning, everyone. Do you have a quorum present with all five commissioners in attendance this morning? Like to recognize Mayor Wolf for being in attendance this morning. Now with that commissioners, we have had a couple of amendments that came in late yesterday afternoon in regards to the agenda before you this morning. The first, we are going to add under tab C, the action and presentation items. Just before the update from the Sweetwater County Library System, we will squeeze in an M R G grant application, a mineral royalty grant application that the Sweetwater County Library System is applying for in regards to the H V A C replacement project at the White Mountain Library. Uh, this will be acted on resolution twenty-four oh nine G R O one, which you all should have received an email late yesterday afternoon on. And then at the end of the agenda, we will need to add an executive session for potential litigation. With that commissioners, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended unless you all have any questions.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards, discussion. Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. First up under tab A this morning, we've got a public hearing for a budget amendment, resolution twenty-five oh nine C L O one. A budget amendment for the county assessor's office. With us this morning is accounting specialist Rebecca Romero. Thank you, morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Yes, so today's budget amendment is for the assessor's office. They are going to be purchasing some chairs for their office. They have nine hundred and thirty-five dollars left over from a grant that's a few years old. And so they are just asking for the remainder balance to come out of their operating into their capital so they can purchase everything together.
Thanks Rebecca. Questions on the amendment commissioners? If not, we'll open this up for the public hearing. At this time, if there's anyone online or in the audience that would like to speak to the budget amendment for the county assessor's office, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mister Chairman, I would make the motion.
Got a motion to approve resolution twenty-five oh nine C L O one, a budget amendment for the county assessor's office by Commissioner Toman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks Rebecca.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the county resident comments and concerns portion of the agenda at this time. If there's anyone in the audience or online that would like to address the governing body. Now would be the appropriate time. Morning Assessor Debus.
Good morning, Mister Chairman, Commissioners. I'm just here to give you a couple of updates on a couple of things going on in the county. First one Greenwood mapping, uh, Rich Greenwood was the one that put together our county map server, I don't know, early nineties. Really an innovator, way ahead of his time on this, this particular product. And he has been looking to retire, so he has sold his company. Um, he was pretty careful on who he sold it to. But the company that he ended up um, working the deal out with was Terra G I S, and they'll be taking over that product. Uh, we will meet that, that new owner and Rich will be there as well at the Waco session. Uh, he works with a lot of the assessors across the state, so we're going to meet with the new owner. Make sure we're all on the same page, what the product does, how it will move forward. Rich didn't necessarily take the best deal. Rich actually got the person he thought was the best for his customers. Um, he had a lot, had a lot of inquiries for people who basically just wanted his contact list and his client list. And he wouldn't do that to us. Um, Rich was one of the good guys and him getting to ride off into the sunset. It's a good thing we're gonna miss him. I mean, Rich was one of those guys where you would call him and say, hey, can the map server do this? And he would think about it for a couple of days and then it would show up. So he was really, really an innovator and he really did customize things to what we as assessors needed. Um, it's by far the best uh, public map server in the state of the ones I've looked at. Ours is by far the best. So we wish Rich well. And we'll meet the new owner um, at Waco next week. Our contract with Greenwood mapping is up like end of October, first part of November, um, but they didn't think there was going to be anything drastic this first year. So I think it's just a transition to the new owner and Rich will be available to help us and to help the new owner as we work through this. So um, one other thing, um, the long-term homeowners exemption has been a very, very hot item in our office. Um, the final application was provided by the Department of Revenue about two weeks ago. And we had been creating a list of applicants when we were helping with the long, the property tax refund program. So we have sent out about five hundred applications. And we are processing those applications now. We've probably done between a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five applications in the office already. And because this is kind of, th- there's an age verification piece to this long-term homeowners exemption, so we have to actually confirm that the person is over sixty-five by, and the due date is not until the fourth Monday of May next year, so we do have some time. But we have to actually see the identification. So this requires people to either come in or us go to the people. So what we've decided to do is go to the Rock Springs Senior Center on October seventeenth from ten thirty to one. And we will be at the Green River Senior Center on October tenth from ten thirty to one. And along with that, we're making um, arrangements to go out to other parts of the county as well. I'm looking into getting up to Farson to one of their senior citizen lunches up there. I just gave Mayor Wolf some applications to have at the Superior Town Hall. I'm gonna get with um, somebody at Wamsetor to see if they would put some out, out there as well. We're doing the best we can. Um, we're obviously not gonna get them all. But it is something where we're doing a lot to try and make sure that these people do get um, these applications. In fact, we went out, we had somebody who was going to doctor's appointments yesterday. I have a hard time getting in the building. We went out to their vehicle. Had them sign it in front of us and then we brought it back in. So we're really doing a lot of extra work to get this done and getting this exemption applied for these people. There are three requirements. You have to be sixty-five years old as of the fourth Monday in May. You have to pay property taxes in Wyoming for twenty-five years. And you have to live in the, the home for eight months of the year. Those are the three requirements. And pretty easy, pretty simple. But it is a big deal and we are working through the process with the taxpayers and trying to get as much, as much as is done before crunch time with evaluation process, with personal property renditions, oil and gas renditions, all of that other stuff that we do during that same cycle. We're trying to, this has been added to it. Kind of an unfunded mandate, but we're gonna do the best we can and we're, and we'll get it finished and we'll get it done for the taxpayers. So and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thanks Dave. On that, the long-term, I can't, was that one sunsetted? I can't remember.
Currently, the legislation sunsets in tax year twenty-two, twenty-seven.
Okay.
Now, that could be the first bill the legislature does, and it's really simple. They just have to remove the sunset date. And I would not be surprised if that happened. Currently, the way it's written, it does have the sunset date, but I think that could change in a heartbeat.
And then, who is the company that uh, Greenwood sold to, did you say?
Terra G I S, T E R R A. And the gentleman's name that bought it is Carsten Veneman.
Yeah, what a great resource to have. Definitely uh, something that I think is heavily utilized by many, obviously, in the assessor's office for, for sure, but even in a personal realm, I use it for my other hat constantly. So it's a great resource to have.
It is a fantastic tool and, and like I said, it, if you're talking about technology saving, you know, complementing jobs, I mean, when the, the day that map server went in, the, the calls from the title companies and calls from the insurance agents and you know, everybody else, they just almost went to zero because these people could access that information online. They could do it before eight and after five and on the weekends, they didn't have to call us anymore. And it really did eliminate a lot of the phone calls in both the treasurer's office and the assessor's office. So fantastic tool, fantastic.
Questions commissioners? Mister Toman?
Uh, yes, I've been getting several questions on this, uh, on the property tax exemption. The twenty-five years, uh, can it be, does it have to be a contin- continuous years or just twenty-five years during your life? And what if it's a husband, wife under the husband's name, would that still count?
It would count.
It would count?
Yeah, and this, this legislation, it doesn't have to be twenty-five years even in Sweetwater County. It just has to be twenty-five years in the state of Wyoming. And it could be ten years. They could move away and come back and have another fifteen years.
Okay.
And that would work as well. Now, we do have to have, there's a section there for the dates.
Right.
You know, you were in Wyoming from this year to this year and you paid property taxes and then you were gone and then you were back from this year to this year. And the way it works is one of the two owners, it actually doesn't even have to be owners. If it's husband and wife and the property is just under the husband's name, they're both out, the property's eligible. If the husband was sixty-five and the wife was not, if she had received the exemption the prior year, even if the husband passed away and she still wasn't sixty-five, she would still continue to get the exemption.
Okay.
So they, they went a long ways to making sure that no one was getting it and then kicked out.
And the other question I had was, uh, if they get the veterans exemption, can they get both or just one or the other?
The way we understand it, as of nine eleven today, um, you can get both.
Okay.
You can get the four percent cap will be applied on the improvement in the land. This fifty percent exemption will be applied to those people that qualify. The veterans exemption that doubled will be applied at the end, and then with whatever's left, if you meet the income requirements, you could probably get the refund as well. So there's one, at this point, none of these, these tax relief programs exempts you from another tax relief program. They are all available. It's an all of the, all of the above situation at this point. Again, nine twelve today, that's the way we understand it.
And is it gonna apply to farm property with home on it as well, for all the property?
Yeah, it's up to thirty-five acres. So it's something we're working with the Department of Revenue. We're gonna have more clarification on that when we meet with them next week at Waco.
Okay, thank you.
But the answer is yes, we just don't know exactly how we're gonna administer it.
Yeah.
Mister Jones?
Mister Chairman, thank you. Um, one question on the eight-month residency, is that just the honor system? Somebody asked me that, or how do you, how do you know?
It is. That's a great question. You are certifying on the application under penalty of perjury that you do meet the requirements. You have the age, you pay taxes for twenty-five years and you live in the house for eight, eight months. Now, I did have my first situation where a neighbor was ratting out another neighbor yesterday. But the neighbor in question had not applied. So it was something where there was no reason to, to tattle because they had not applied at this point. So but it is something where, yeah, you're right, it is the honor system. But you know, we're pretty clear that you have to be here for eight months. And the intent behind that is so someone can't have like a V R B O, vacation rental or Airbnb or something that they ran out for six, six months of the year, and then they're only here for six months of the year. They wanted to make sure it was not an income-producing property. They want to make sure it was local residents, not the people in Jackson who come in for Christmas and then come in in the summer one other week. They wanted to make sure it was truly for local residents who meet the age requirement and have paid taxes for twenty-five years. So that was the intent, the way I understood it.
All right. Thanks, Mister Debus. Appreciate the update. We're still under county resident comments and concerns. If there's anyone else that would like to address the governing body, now would be the appropriate time. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the county residents' comments and concerns portion of the agenda. Commissioners, this is gonna move us right along into tab B. Which is the consent agenda. Before you this morning are eight items, first being the approval of the September third, two thousand twenty-four minutes. The approval of the county vouchers, warrants and the expenditure approval listing, along with the commissioner's report. The approval of bonds, approval of monthly reports, approval of the A baits and rebates. The approval of the human service agreements, a request to restaff a vacant position in the detention center. And a request to restaff a vacant position in facilities for the custodial department. Commissioners, I would ask if there's any requests to pull any items from the consent agenda for further discussion.
Mister Chairman?
Mister Toman?
I would pull item B six, approval of human service agree, agreements as we have a typo on one of the agreements.
Okay. Are there any other requests to pull any additional items?
Mister Chairman, I would ask to pull the A baits and rebates, just to ask a question of Assessor Debus since he is here.
Very good. Any other requests? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of the A baits, rebates and the human service agreements.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards is their second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. First up will be the human service agreements, Commissioner Toman.
The human service agreement for the museum, item four C, it should say Golden Hour uh, as storage unit instead of Young at Heart, I believe. Is that correct? That was the only correction that I saw on there.
Yeah, I think it's just in reference to some storage. It has the proper address, but just the wrong center. Good catch, Commissioner. Any other questions on that? If not, it entertain a motion to approve the human service agreements with the correction as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Toman, further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Next will be the A baits and rebates. It sounds like Commissioner Slaughter has a question.
Yep. Thank you, Chairman. Uh, Assessor Debus, just in looking at this, it's, we only have the one A bait. But it is a very large abatement from F D L operating. Uh, it looks like it's gonna affect our tax roll by seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. What, what was the action that created the need for the rebate on this?
Uh, and I don't know, I didn't see it firsthand. I didn't, it wasn't presented to me. It's something my staff just does. I would assume it was a notice valuation change that was a, a, probably the result of an audit, I would bet. Now, I don't have it in front of me. If you want me to go grab the notice valuation change, I can, I can get back with you.
No, I just, anytime something that large comes up, I think it's something that we just need to look at and that's, that's a big hit to
Sure.
when you're talking that much revenue. So, no, I, I don't think we need to see that. I, I would, I'll, I'll talk to you later on and see if it was the result of an audit or what took place at that point in time, but just wondered, once again, because of magnitude. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Any other questions on A baits, rebates? Thanks, Mister Debus. With that, it entertain a motion to approve the A baits and rebates as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Slaughter, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones, further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. It's gonna move us right along into the commissioner comments portion of the agenda. Leading us off is Commissioner Slaughter.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, let me get back here and find my comments.
Slaughter goes, did, could I ask a question?
Well, the floor was Commissioner Slaughter.
Oh, she cannot.
The floor is yours.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Make a motion for the consent agenda?
Already did. We did that first. And then we did the
Okay, cuz I, I missed that part.
No problem. No, it's okay. We started with that and then we went to the items that were
Okay, sorry.
No problem. Back to you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Always Slaughter.
On, on the fifth of September, I attended the Microsoft Teams meeting. A Microsoft Teams meeting to discuss the Rock Springs R M P. The meeting was organized by Micah Christensen of the Wyoming County Commissioners Association. The intent was to help counties that will be impacted by the Rock Springs R M P better prepare arguments for potential violations made by the B L M in preparing their F E I S. Several issues were considered. I believe that our team is well-prepared and will have several substantive comments submitted prior to the September twenty-third deadline. On the sixth, I met with Bridger fee, phase of the U W extension office. Our intent was to work together to modify the M O U presented to us at our last meeting to come to consensus. In speaking with Bridger, it became apparent that the U W extension was unwilling to change the proposed M O U with the exception of the contract term. Through our conversation, Bridger was able to explain to me the reason for the, his lack of willingness to make changes. Their position is that they use the same agreement for all of the other counties along with other agencies that they serve. I told Bridger I would resubmit the M O U at the October first B O C C meeting and we could discuss it. And I then had a follow-up discussion with John De Leone on the position of the U W extension. I will follow up on preparation for the October first meeting and get that on our agenda. Later that morning, I met with Public Works Director Legursky to discuss the progress with the C M A R, the Construction Manager at Risk Process. Gene has been pleased with the process in general and believes there will be significant savings by using this method. The C M A R has identified many areas that can be amended and Gene is reviewing them. The guaranteed maximum price is slightly over the budget Gene has presented, but there are several relevant factors that Gene will be discussing with us later today. On the ninth, the members of our industrial siting group met to discuss the Dry Creek Trona Project Industrial Siting Application. I will let Commissioner Richards provide more detail on that as he's leading that. Later that day, I conducted the September regular meeting of the two thousand twenty-two Specific Purpose Tax Joint Powers Board. Things continue to move pretty smoothly with this board. Requisitions continue to be submitted and evaluated with approval in most cases. Tax revenues continue to come in slightly higher than what was anticipated. This month's sales tax distribution from the Department of Revenue was one million, five hundred seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Our total collections to date are twenty-five million, three hundred sixty-three thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents. On the thirteenth, I had lunch at the Golden Hour Senior Center. Green River City Council members George Yost and Sherry Bushman joined me to provide information to the patrons about projects that are going on at this time and the impact they may have on our citizens. We then stayed around to allow individual questions after the lunch had been served. I received several positive comments and think it was beneficial to all. Special thanks to the administration and staff at Golden Hour for allowing us the opportunity and the warm reception we received. Yesterday, I spent the day in my office responding to requests, replying to email messages and preparing for today's meeting. I also received a copy of the application from Dry Creek Trona, which is extremely extensive and began reviewing that. Uh, with that, Mister Chairman, I'll conclude my comments and I would stand for any questions.
Thanks, Commissioner. Any questions for Commissioner Slaughter's report? If not, Commissioner Toman, floor is back to you.
Yes, sir. On September fifth, I also attended the W, the Wyoming County Commission Association, their uh, call on the Rock Springs Resource Management Plan. On September sixth, I attended our federal partners meeting. September seventh, I attended the Forbes Family Farm at Sheep Creek Canyon, their annual, one of their annual dinners uh, from the farm products. So it's very very worthwhile and I'd recommend anyone, you might want to try that another year. September ninth, I attended the Rock Springs Airport Board meeting as usual. There were a lot of activities uh, happening up at that airport. August twenty-sixth, they made the official move to the temporary terminal in twelve instead of eighteen hours and it's up and running. So that will be a more pleasant experience for our air uh, passengers. October first, the runway lighting project to the L E D lights should be completed. On the March eighth, the runway broom pre-delivery inspection will happen. Uh, they will go, I can't remember which state, but they will go east to do that inspection, someone will. And they will also in the spring go to Ogden to inspect the boarding bridge for the new terminal. The ongoing water and sewer projects will be finished this fall. Board members of the airport board are completing their board online training. There will be a retreat scheduled for early December for the airport board. They approved uh, their airport capitalization policy and a Title Six plan and community participa- uh, participation plan as required by the feds and these relate to translation services outreach to disadvantaged. And their definition of disadvantage is, it's been expanded to those with no high school diploma, those who live in a flood zone or a wildfire area. So that should be fun to try to determine all of those. The flex debt lease has been renewed for five years for that hangar space and they are receiving over four hundred thousand annually in total hangar rentals. That afternoon, I attended virtually and uh, the mayor, Chairman Wamsley and uh, Executive Director Devon Brubaker traveled to uh, there may, I believe, for the Wyoming Business Council meeting and I testified online. They did approve the five million dollar loan at one percent for thirty years and the two million grant, but as needed after they've gotten all of their other monies. Next, first week in October, we will also be testifying before the State Land Investment Board on funding requests for the airport. September fourteenth was my birthday and I didn't get any chocolates from any of my fellow commissioners. I'm really upset. But I did attend the wedding of the century at the Hamill Ranch for James Ramsey and Aspen Hamill. It was quite the affair. Governor Gross Nickle and his daughter had volunteered their time to help with the wedding also. So it, it was quite the affair. It was very worth attending, very well and very well attended. Uh, yesterday, I met with um, Jamie Laredo regarding a Young at Heart complaint that Island Richards had received and that has been followed up with their chairman and that, and the affected parties. Upcoming tonight, I will travel to Pinedale to the Bureau of Land Management Research Advisory Council. Two of the items on our agenda will be um, approving a letter, a resolution on wild horses and, and how the B L M manages them or should manage them. And also, we will be discussing the Bureau of Land Management's Blueprint for the Twenty-First Century Outdoor Recreation. This was published last year, but we will have a discussion about this. On the nineteenth, the Coalition of Local Governments, I will still be in Pinedale, be, and be touring La Barge Creek. Uh, one of the bill projects from the Biden administration. It's like a multimillion, I think fifteen million dollar project on La Barge Creek. The twenty-first, the Museum Foundation is hosting a fundraiser at the Broadway Theater, Butch Cassidy and the Sundance Kid. I would encourage people to get online and sign up for that. It will be very interesting and they have a dinner, a movie and the nephew of Butch Cassidy in attendance. So please help us spread the word. I know it's a busy time and people are hunting and doing all sorts of things, so I am sending out a, a shout out to please support that activity. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner.
Commissioner. Toman, I just want to remind you not to lift that by the lid or we'll be tripping. Thanks for the report, Commissioner. Looks like Commissioner Richards, you're up next.
Good morning, Mister Chairman, Commissioners.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. On September fourth, I joined the SEDC staff in a meeting with Grants Director Christina Marshall in a meeting to develop plans to pursue a grant to fund a comprehensive economic development study. We were still planning to partner with you in accounting on that study primarily because of similar economic interests and partly because of a good working relationship. Another neighboring county has shown interest in being involved, but at this point, we're in agreement with you into the keeping it focused on our two counties makes the most sense. So that is the prevailing plan. On the morning of the fifth, I attended the Enterprise Coalition Meeting at the hospital where we received a presentation from Craig Rude from Project West on the progress of their project. They have received all their permits or planning to move forward with their project as scheduled. In addition, they have secured contracts for much of their needed housing around Sweetwater County. Later that morning, I remotely attended a County Commissioners Association Meeting for the Rock Springs RMP impacted counties. That afternoon, I attended another Sweetwater County Outdoor Recreation Coalition Steering Committee Meeting where Amy Crawford introduced herself to the smaller group. Amy will be our new coordinator and will be facilitating all eight ORCs across the state, while she also works to expand that number to twelve over the next couple of years. While it is bittersweet to see Bryn move on to bigger and better things in state parks, I think this will be a great opportunity to reset and reinvigorate some of our efforts of promoting outdoor recreation in the county. On the sixth, I attended the monthly federal partners meeting hosted by the Rock Springs Chamber of Commerce while it was heavily attended by local legislators and fellow commissioners. The only federal partner in attendance was a representative from Ashley National Forest. Maybe I'm wrong, but I attribute that at least in part to some of the legislators focusing on using the meeting as a place to just attack the BLM over the RMP. Yes, we all know the RMP is a problem and I think the words I used to describe it were incompetent, if not criminal. But I wanna remind everyone that the Rock Springs RMP is just one facet in the many complicated relationships we have with our federal agencies. And we can't let it sour the relationships we have with, with the many local employees of federal agencies whom we absolutely must deal with to get things done in Southwest Wyoming. I'd also like to remind guests of the meetings that they are expected to treat everyone with respect and that includes how you treat my fellow commissioners. On Friday evening, Land Use Director Bingham and I were made aware that Pacific Soda Dry Creek Industrial Siting Application was formally submitted on the fourth, triggering that thirty-day countdown for impacted entities to have an MOU in place in order to apply for impact funds from the project. Since we only learned about it Friday evening, we were only able to begin to really address it on Monday, losing us about five days of response time. Eric, Aubrey from Eric's office, Mr. De Leone, Clerk Lane, as well as Commissioner Slaughter and I met Monday afternoon to develop a game plan and a timeline for putting together the MOU. The application only identifies Sweetwater County and its communities as being impacted. Eric has run some economic distribution models and those justify that by projecting at least ninety-five percent of the impact will be in Sweetwater County. Page five of the application identifies thirty-four point nine million worth of funds being available to apply for, meaning that we should be able to justify up to thirty-three point one million in requests for Sweetwater. Page ninety-three of the application, however, we, we believe mistakenly identifies sixty-four point three million worth of funds being available to apply for, meaning we would be able to justify up to sixty-one million in requests. However, changes to the industrial siting statutes spearheaded by our own representative from House District Eighteen have diminished our ability to meet the impacts of this project by about thirty million dollars. So, so thank you for that, Representative. We notified about forty-five entities of the application and told them that we needed preliminary requests for funding by yesterday at five PM. Eric has been busy working with those entities to help them craft their request to make sure they are consistent with the limits placed on them by state statute and will be meeting this afternoon to work through the requests. In addition, in addition, the Industrial Siting Office notified Lincoln and U N A County, along with their communities of the impact, so we can expect them to wanna share also. We scheduled the MOU meeting to be held on September twenty-seventh from ten AM to twelve PM here in the Commissioner's meeting room. That will mean that we will have the MOU in front of us for approval at our October first meeting, so we can approve it in time to have it submitted to industrial siting by the deadline on the fourth. It is a very compressed timeline, but since it is our second go-around this year, I think we can pull it off. Eric will be presenting to us later today with more details on that process and to request your authorization to let me negotiate the MOU on this board's behalf. So I won't elaborate anymore and we'll wait until we reach that part of our agenda to discuss it further. For now, I want to thank all the members of the team for the work they are doing already and the heavy lifting that's coming down the road. On the evening of the ninth, I attended the monthly board meeting for Solid Waste District Number One. It's great to see the progress they've been making as an entity in the last year and where they're going. They asked me if we had found them a new board member yet to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Bryant, who had moved out of the district and I asked them if they had officially notified us of the vacancy yet, which they had not. I pointed out to them that I had left my psychic pills at home and that if they don't tell us that they need a new board member, we have no way of knowing. Their director immediately mailed Sally the notification, so we'll be addressing that on our agenda today also. On the tenth, I remotely attended the general meeting of Skork where Amy introduced herself to the larger group. We also received a great presentation from John Freeman on the new Skyline Trail being developed above Green River. It could be called the High Line Trail. I'm not sure. He goes back and forth as he, as he names it. For those of you that are not aware, the Skyline Trail is an approximately four and a half mile handicap accessible interpretive trail the Green Milk Task Force has been working on for quite some time on the south side of Green River, which is just about finished. As of last week, they only had about another quarter mile of trail left to build. On the eleventh, I remotely attended the monthly, monthly WCCA update. Then last night on the sixteenth, I attended the monthly library board meeting, which was held over here at Sweetwater County Library, where among other things, they approved the funding agreement with Sweetwater County as well as the use of a hundred thousand dollars as matching funds for the new grant we'll be discussing with Christina later. Like us, they're disappointed that they were denied the grant to fund the replacement of the HVAC system at White Mountain Library. It's just one more reminder that capital needs in Sweetwater County don't stop just because the funding streams slow down. Going forward, I'll be meeting with staff today to work on the Dry Creek impact requests. I think we have quite a few of them to go over and if the last round was any indication, a lot of corrections to make and discussions to be had, so we could be here for quite a while this evening. Tomorrow, I'll attend a Housing Task Force meeting followed by SEDS project update. On the nineteenth, I'll remotely attend the Naco West Region Monthly Meeting. Also tomorrow, I will face my most difficult and intimidating assignment yet. I'll be making a presentation about county government to third and fourth graders over at the Masterminds Homeschool Academy for the Tuttle Twins Government Class. On the twentieth, I am packing up the family and the camper for a long planned vacation in Yellowstone Park, one which I'll be making a quick trip back from in the middle to host the Dry Creek MOU meeting on the twenty-seventh. Since I'll be back anyway, I will, I'll plan on attending the community conversation with Governor Gordon, Gordon on the evening of the twenty-sixth. After the meeting on the twenty-seventh, I'll head back to Yellowstone to retrieve my family and my camper and I'll be back here on the thirtieth for an SEDC meeting in the morning and a Joint Powers Combined Communications Board meeting that afternoon, bringing me full circle back to seeing all of you back here on October first. One last thing I'd like to make note of is the passing of John Kendrick this morning. John has been battling cancer this year and as it does, cancer finally won. I wanna offer my condolences to his wife Tamara, as well as his kids and his extended family and friends that he's left behind. John was a great guy, as evidenced by the great family he built. Godspeed, John. I think that's all I have for you today, Mr. Chairman. I'm happy to stand for the questions. Feel free to ask them from the perspective and of an eight or nine-year-old, so I can practice for tomorrow.
Good luck with that. That does sound like, uh, probably one of the more difficult tasks, Commissioner. Appreciate the report. Um, I echo your condolences to the Kendrick family.
Of Commissioners. Also.
I'm still going, Commissioner Tomlin. Um, I just wanted to say, I appreciate your dedication to the industrial siding process. I know and obviously you and Commissioner and staff had a heavy hand in that with Project West and then seems like it was a long time ago, but really it wasn't. Now you're already moving along into the Dry Creek, Dry Creek project, which is a pretty close to impossible task with an extremely tight timeline and sacrifice and vacation, many other things. So I appreciate you doing the heavy lifting on that. It certainly doesn't go unnoticed. Mr. Tomlin.
Uh, we should also mention, mention condolences to the Vescal family for the loss of, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Vescal.
Any other questions for Commissioner Richards's report?
Mr. Chairman, just, just a comment. Um, having, uh, presented before third graders, good luck with that. It's a very fun experience. And just one question, and I will phrase it as much like a third grader as I can. Could I get some of the new vitamins that you must be on after your report this morning?
I'm sub-sin over. Thanks for the report, Commissioner. It looks like Commissioner Jones, you're up next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a fair amount of me too in my report, so that'll make it short. Um, on the fourth, I attended the monthly hospital Sweetwater County Board Meeting was held here in our chambers. Uh, the hospital conducts at least one board meeting per year in Green River in order to make it easy for Green River residents to attend, uh, rather than having to drive to Rock Springs every month if they so choose. Um, most of their conversations I've covered in previous meetings. However, I would like to report that Irene Richards is the, uh, president of the Wyoming Hospital Association. Uh, they also improved installing an electronic billboard sign at the road in front of the hospital. Um, Clifton Larson Allen will likely be on until the end of the year assisting with revenue side of things through the conversion of uh, the acute care, which is still slated to begin October first. Uh, on the fifth, I attended the enterprise meeting as was already covered, so I'll leave that one alone. Uh, also on the fifth, I attended the WCCA meeting, uh, over the RMP. One thing I would like to note is there was a comment made in there by, uh, the governor's office, um, that the task force was largely silent on the Golden Triangle and Jack Morrell Hills, that whole area. Um, I'd like to clarify that a little bit. Uh, the task force was not largely silent on that. In fact, uh, there was discussion on it. Uh, however, with the nonsensical voting system that we, uh, were using, uh, one voting member voted a five and without getting into too much detail, if one person votes a five, that stops the conversation. So that's what happened in that area. So the task force was not largely silent and in fact, uh, there is great concern over the BLM plan and what's going on in that whole area. On the sixth, I attended the federal partners meeting also. Um, so leave that one alone. On the ninth, I attended the Star Transit Monthly Board Meeting. Uh, the first new bus is scheduled to arrive October first, uh, with second bus due hopefully a month later. They are also working on selling advertising, uh, on the side of the buses to generate a little extra revenue. Uh, on the tenth, I attended the Sweetwater County Outdoor Rec Meeting. That one was already covered by Commissioner Richards, so I'll leave that one alone. Uh, on the eleventh, I also attended the WCCA meeting. Uh, Senator Brasso did, uh, mention, uh, the Congressional Gold Medal Ceremony that took place in honor of the thirteen service members killed in action at Abbey Gate in Afghanistan three years ago. Uh, Wyoming's Riley McCollum was one of the thirteen. His father and sister, uh, who live in Rock Springs now, uh, were there for the ceremony. Uh, Senator Brass also discussed wildfires in Wyoming. Senator Loomis's office mentioned legislation being worked on surrounding ownership of land by foreign adversaries, so not all foreign ownership, but adversaries. And Representative Higman discussed blocking the Chinese Communist Party from owning land in the US. On the twelfth, I attended the Rock Springs Chamber Luncheon where Trout Unlimited and then Mule Fanatics gave good presentations. Uh, Tracy Burton was also recognized as the two thousand twenty-four Teacher of the Year. So congratulations to Tracy and thank you for your commitment to our youth. Uh, on the fourteenth, this last Saturday, I attended a celebration alive for very good friend, Robert Chandler. I know I mentioned him a few meetings ago, but, uh, he was a, a great businessman, an individual here in Sweetwater County. Uh, overheard his wife mentioned that he was generous to a fault. Uh, that's one of his, the incredible truths about Robert. Uh, he was good as an individual, as a person could hope to meet and call friends. So rest in peace, Robert. That concludes my comments.
Thanks, Commissioner. I, uh, wanted to piggyback on your comments in regards to, I guess, no action per se by the task force, the governor's task force. I, I believe at the end, we spent a significant amount of time discussing Jack Morrell Hills and the Golden Triangle and certainly Little Mountain and some of those other areas, but any area that we could not reach consensus on meant that as Commissioner Jones alluded to, that it was basically a mute point. And we tried to alter that in the final report and were turned down for such because it probably would have carried more weight at this point in time. You would ask, what's the relevance of that? It's neither here nor there, but the fact of the matter is there was a lot of work and a lot of discussion back and forth on some key areas that are now, you know, faced with detrimental change that may have had a different outcome from the BLM had the votes been, I guess, assigned differently. Um, there was a clear majority there with the, a position on both of those topics that were simply held up because of the consensus, consensus voting style that took place. And so, um, we knew it at the time, at the beginning of the process, I think, uh, we may have been influenced into the consensus voting and, and hindsight would never agree to such, but, uh, here we are and unfortunately, now you're seeing some of the pushback on those topics, which is unfortunate. Any other comments or questions for Commissioner Jones's report? Thanks, Commissioner. Appreciate your work. Uh, it looks like I'm bringing up the end here, so I get to be Mr. Repito today. Um, last couple of weeks have been relatively light for the most part. Plenty of phone calls and emails throughout the day-to-day. As far as meetings go, it's pretty minimal for the most part. Um, took a day of vacation yesterday and quickly regretted that when I came back to thirty-five emails waiting for me. Um, it's a very interesting job with the different ebbs and flows and in a weird way, that's, uh, one of the reasons I've grown to enjoy it. On the fourth, I attended the monthly Mayor and Commissioner Meeting with Mayor Mickelson, who was in attendance, as well as Green River City Administrator Reed Clevander and Rock Springs Chamber CEO Rick Lee. And so the first one, we'd all been in attendance for probably about three months, just with the different busy summer schedules. We discussed and updated one another on a handful of topics ranging from budgets, mental and behavioral health, opioid funds, suicide prevention and economic development. Uh, the city of Green River is marching forward on their wastewater treatment plant upgrade despite some setbacks with increased costs. And the city of Rock Springs has been busy planning the suicide prevention month of events that Mayor Mickelson spoke to us about at our last meeting. Collectively, there's not a whole lot to bring you up to speed on outside of those items. I think it's more or less an opportunity to keep engaged with the happenings in both cities and allow for continued partnerships, which I find important as each governmental entity is certainly busy in their own ways. So I just wanted to say thanks to Rick for his continued efforts and allowing for that opportunity. On the fifth, I as well attended a Teams meeting held by the Wyoming County Commissioners Association. It was mainly an update for some of the counties who may not be as affected as Sweetwater, for example, in regards to the BLM's now proposed RMP. Uh, Micah Christensen with the WCCA had Nolan Rap from the governor's office, along with representation from the Attorney's General Office as well. Fortunately for our team, I believe our protest response was right in line with the information shared and the suggested approach that, uh, we're going after on that. Yesterday was supposed to be the Sweetwater County Water Users Coalition Meeting. Obviously, as you just heard, I was out of the office and so I missed that, but they didn't have a quorum anyway. So we will catch up with that one. Uh, they meet every other month, so I guess we'll hear more in November. Um, had a conversation with Christina, who is setting up a meeting with Wyoming Grant Assistance Program to help assist us with the opioid and problematic gambling money and how to best spend down those funds we've been accumulating. Um, especially in particular to the opioid funds. I believe those are continuing on through twenty thirty-eight, as I recall. So, uh, they're coming in at different times as settlements come about and primarily speaking, uh, we're just holding on to those funds. We haven't spent down any of them and part of that is due to the different eligibility and our reporting requirements. I actually just received an email in regards to, uh, reporting on any funds spent within that. And so I think the idea is to utilize Y Gap to help us with some assistance and how those monies can be spent and spent properly. Um, there's been some debate across the state in that regard on what it can and can't be spent on. And in the meantime, the funds continue to accumulate, but they're not being put to effect. And so we wanna utilize those funds, uh, where appropriate. I know in Southwest Counseling's agreement with the commission this year, for instance, we asked them to come up with a plan on a use that they may be able to utilize those funds for. So hopefully between the meeting with Christina and Y Gap and some of the different agencies, uh, we can begin to put that money to work. If any of you are interested in attending that, please let me know. We're trying to set that up in the weeks to come. Uh, aside from that, we've got Waco next Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, which unfortunately will interfere with my monthly District Board of Health and Southwest Counseling monthly meetings. So I will reach out to those entities to see what I missed. And with that, Commissioners, I believe that concludes my report. Stand for any questions. And with none. nice work, commissioners. We're right on pace here. This will move us right along into tab C, which is the action and presentation items portion of the agenda. First up is two proclamations, uh, two very difficult proclamations, but important that we want to take time to recognize. And I will read both of those aloud, and then if there's anyone here that would like a picture, uh, we can do that. Our next item after these proclamations is a break. And so we'll, we'll break for that as well. Um, the first proclamation is for Blood Cancer Awareness Month. And it reads, whereas blood cancers, including leukemia, lymphoma and myeloma, affect thousands of individuals and families in our community, causing significant physical, emotional and financial challenges. And whereas September is recognized as Blood Cancer Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to raise awareness, support those affected and encourage continued research and education efforts to combat these devastating diseases. And whereas advancements in medical research, research and treatment have improved survival rates, but more work remains to be done to find a cure and enhance the quality of life for those living with blood cancers. And whereas the tireless efforts of healthcare professionals, researchers, advocates and organizations dedicated to blood cancer awareness and research have made a profound impact on patients and their families. And whereas we stand united in our commitment to supporting blood cancer patients, survivors and caregivers and in fostering a community that offers hope, compassion and resources to those in need. And whereas by increasing public knowledge and encouraging regular health screenings, we can work towards early detection and more effective treatment of blood cancers. Now therefore, the Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaim September two thousand twenty-four as Blood Cancer Awareness Month in Sweetwater County, Wyoming, and encourage all residents to learn more about blood cancers, support those affected and contribute to the ongoing fight against these diseases. And the next proclamation is for Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And it reads, whereas childhood cancer remains the leading cause of death by disease for children in our nation affecting thousands of young lives and their families every year. Whereas September is recognized as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, providing a vital opportunity to honor the young warriors battling cancer. Remember the children who have lost their lives to this disease and support the families enduring the profound challenges of a childhood cancer diagnosis, diagnosis. Whereas despite advancements in treatment, much work remains to be done to improve survival rates, minimize long-term side effects and ultimately find a cure for all types of childhood cancers. And whereas the bravery and resilience of children fighting cancer inspire us all and their courage underscores the importance of ongoing research, education and advocacy efforts. And whereas healthcare professionals, researchers, caregivers and organizations dedicated to childhood cancer work tirelessly to provide hope, support and innovative treatments for affected children and their families. And whereas increased public awareness, early detection and access to specialized medical care are critical in improving outcomes for children diagnosed with cancer. And now therefore, the Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners hereby proclaim September two thousand twenty-four as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Sweetwater County, Wyoming, and urge all citizens to join in raising awareness, supporting affected families and contributing to the ongoing efforts to conquer childhood cancer. With that, commissioners, I would entertain a motion to approve both proclamations as presented.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards. Got a motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Commissioner Jones. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Um, we are going to take about a fifteen minute break. We'll resume back here at ten oh five. If there's anyone that would like to have a picture with those proclamations, we will stick around for that and resume back here at ten oh five.
You have, okay. You have them?
Yeah.
Glad you kind of pointed it out without pointing fingers. Thanks for defending me.
We will go ahead and call this meeting back to order. We have returned from break. And where we left off under tab C on the action and presentation items was item number three, which is patrol services and superior. With us this morning is Mayor Dominic Wolf, I believe, some staff.
Morning, Mayor.
Good morning. Thank you Chairman and Commissioners. My Community Resource Officer is going to hand out a few things that you guys can take a look at. So I know under the agenda, it said, I guess, what did it say under the agenda? LOU for Superior. All right, well, over the past five years, I hired a Community Resource Officer, kind of keep the money, the budget down instead of hiring a cop. And it was just basically to to do our ordinances and, you know, nuisances and stuff. In that time, me and Ross, Community Resource Officer, tried getting with the Sheriff's Department and the Sheriff quite a few times just to see if he can come out and patrol, network with my Community Resource Officer, get some intel, things that are happening on, not just in my town, but other small towns. We've never had cooperation by the Sheriff. I hate to say it. The Sheriff would never line up any meetings with me. This is probably the worst I've ever been treated as far as my seven years in being a political official. Every time I meet with Sheriff, he sends me a lieutenant, if anything, you know, so I go meet with Lieutenant. Lieutenant said a few things that I didn't like at all, so I wasn't satisfied when I met with him. One of the things was I wanted a deputy for my court. We're going to start holding court out there to try to help mitigate some of these problems, and they're small issues. Lieutenant said, well, we can't hire, we can't send a deputy out there unless we're in an MOU, LOU. And something has to happen, like for instance, that judge who got attacked in Las Vegas. He used that as a, as an example. And I said, well, that don't work because thirty-five minutes out, we're already going to be scattered and we're going to be policing each other, which we do not want. So on the safety issue on that, I cannot believe that the Sheriff or the Lieutenant said that to me. He said if, basically if we wanted protection too, we'd have to drop out of being incorporated and be like Farson and Reliance. Did not like that idea one bit. Superior is a unique, unique place, and I love it. I was born and raised there and I have passion for it. So for the Sheriff's, the County Sheriff not to help us, it frustrates me. One of the other things, you know, I only got so much time, but anyway, I was not satisfied with anything the deputies or Sheriff had to say. At that time, I think I met with the help with the Commissioner Slaughter helped me rearrange another meeting with the Sheriff because I was not satisfied with the Lieutenant. At that, at that meeting, as you see in these emails that I gave out, you know, he, he, he does not want to meet. So I don't know. I don't know where to go. This is my last option is coming to you guys and see if we can persuade our Sheriff to take care of our small towns. I made trips last week and couple of weeks to our other small towns. I don't know if you guys know them, Barrowell, Womsett, or Granger. And they kind of have the same issues. I mean, some are, you know, Granger is pretty close by, not too many issues, but what if they do have issues? Are they going to get taken care of? Because I can tell you right now, Superior is not, and with him dropping that LOU and even meeting with me or the Commissioners to get into an LOU or an MOU, nothing's going to happen. And it's sad to say we're on live right now and everything, and this is getting out. It's a bummer that our small towns are not covered, and I really hope to persuade the Sheriff to do something for us, to help us. These are small problems in our small towns. And to not get to help for him even just coming by. All the small towns are asking for police presence. That's it. Not a Sheriff to come in, stay in our town, house them. We just want them to drive through, come visit us at our office, visit our clerk, maybe our Community Resource Officer, or if we don't have anything, at least come and see our clerk and our mayor. I know he's probably got one more year left, but if he ain't done nothing now, he ain't going to come by. And when he does, when I met with him for the last time, he did send out deputies, probably for a week straight, sat in the park and at our administration building, sat around town. That was perfect. That's all we want. Well, that ended a week and a half later, you know, everybody sees it in our small towns, so. Our small towns are very unique, and for our Sheriff to see him patrolling the highway, Green River, Rock Springs, yes, that's his voter base, and I guess that's what works to get him elected. But us out in the county, I think, I almost think the county people need to vote for our Sheriff, not the cities. They have their own policing. One other thing I got to get to is this impact fees. I know the Sheriff went and testified in front of this board and the Impact Fee Assistance Board, and, you know, we all know he's getting money for that for patrolling. How much is that? Is he, is that for patrolling Rock Springs, Green River? Is it for us in our small towns? And if it isn't for the small towns, can we get that money since he's a lame duck in the next year because he ain't going to do nothing? Can we get that money dispersed upon ourselves to hire our own police? Like I said, Ross, John Cheeley, my Community Resource Officer, I've had him for five years. We've been fighting a battle and basically our hands are tied. So what happened was Mr. Ozzy Kenezvich, he came into Superior's life wanting to buy some property and retire. And I'd go bug him and say, hey, man, can a Sheriff, what's his responsibilities? Does he do this? Told him a couple examples. He said, you know what? Just go talk to the Sheriff. He'll do something. Sheriff's, they, they, they're there to help, you know, and I said, all right. Went to that one. It did not go well. At the end, the Sheriff basically said, hey, get with County Commissioners, get into LOU, MOU. Let's see what we can do. I come over, I try to get that lined up with Mr. Slaughter, Commissioner Slaughter, and I guess the mayor, or the Sheriff dropped the ball and says he does not want to meet. So I really think that our small towns are in trouble. I really want to help. I sit on the Wyoming Association of Municipalities Board for Small Towns. My region goes clear to encampment. And I went to a region board meeting last night and our Sheriff ain't the only one that ain't doing nothing for these small towns. So as a representative of the WAM Board, I, I have to fight further and I have to protect our small towns because I'm not going nowhere in my small town. I'm not moving. I don't plan on it. But I do want us covered. I mean, it would be a shame if one of us mayors or councils had to, had to withhold somebody because they were on something now that the drugs are upon us big time in Sweetwater County. We have a few incidents like that, you know, disorderly is, what are we supposed to do, you know? Where is our, our emergency management at that point? Do we renegotiate our emergency management so us mayors can take on, you know, different situations? I really don't know. I've had no guidance, no, nothing from the Sheriff. So when Ozzy walked into my life, he gave me guidance. He showed me the right avenues to go the right way. And instead of going to the press and just blowing this out of the water, because I love this county, I really do. And I want us to all succeed, and we're all working together. I see us, you guys as a board working hard for everything that you guys are doing for us people out there. So on that note, I just would really, really would love to get into an LOU or an MOU, or if there's impact assistance that the police is getting and he's not going to patrol our town, he should not get that money. That's all I had. I just want to keep it short and simple. I do not like this. This is my, this is probably my worst experience coming and telling you guys how weak our Sheriff is. And I really would encourage you guys to please, we please move forward with this. And if there's any money, if there's anything I can do as a WAM Board member, if I can go to legislative, we need more money. If we need more assistance, please let me know so I can go to legislate just like you guys and, and fight for the money that we need to, to support our small towns and to support ourselves. At this time, I really would like to hand the floor over to Mr. Kenezvich. He is my Public Safety Director and my Police Chief. And I had to do all that because I got nothing from the Sheriff's Department. Ozzy comes with a lot. And he came out of retirement voluntarily to do this, so I really hope that makes you guys realize the passion that he has for that town as well, because he grew up there as well. And so I'd like to go ahead and turn the floor over if I can, just for a few minutes. Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Kenezvich.
Good morning. Commissioners, the Mayor did not want to have to do this today. Had the Sheriff just met with the Mayor and helped him work these situations out, I would still be retired. The Mayor asked me to be their chief last December. I said, no, I'm retired. By February, I went, if you can make this a volunteer reserve type position, because I do not want a job, I will do this for you. I'll cover your courts once a month. I'll cover your main events when they have them in town if I'm around, and I'll help you deal with the drug issues in this town. But I do not want a job. It's got to be voluntary. The reason I did that is because that town gave me my break into law enforcement in nineteen ninety. I was the Chief of Police, Town Marshal of Superior in nineteen ninety. My family's been in Superior since nineteen oh nine. I came home and I came home to something I didn't expect. Because that break in law enforcement led to a thirty-two-year career, seventeen of which I was an elected constitutional sheriff. And to hear a Sheriff say he is not coming is something I'd never dreamed I'd see. For thousands of years, people wore this title, and we have a duty to protect. It's a sworn duty. I mentioned the term constitutional because it matters. Not all states are constitutional sheriffs. Wyoming happens to be not to be a constitutional-based sheriff. They're established by the legislature. However, the legislature, in the description of the duties of the Sheriff, made sure to include the common law theme of the Office of Sheriff. That common law theme is very basic and very simple in principle. The Sheriff protects. There's case law commissioners on this. Because this isn't the first time Sheriff has refused to do their damn job. The case law is very clear that Sheriff, if he knows that a jurisdiction can't or won't handle a crime, his duty is to do so. This community deserves more because I learned that the Sheriff's Office doesn't have the ability to do proactive drug enforcement. Are you aware of that? In a day and age where our biggest threats are what's coming over that southern border, enough fentanyl to kill every American, and we have no proactive drug enforcement in the Sheriff's Office? He's not a member of DCI either. Have you ever met a mother who has lost his child to fentanyl? I have. I used to bring him on my radio program when I was Sheriff so they could get their voice out. I ended up on Fox News in two thousand nineteen because it's when my governor declared our state a sanctuary state. I said, they should either be censored or they should be charged with obstruction of justice for not enforcing the laws of this nation. The same progressive type mentality I never dreamt I'd see in Sweetwater County, not a unit to deal with drugs. We need to do something and we want your help. A simple letter of understanding, because what happens if I have to arrest somebody? And I have to take him to the county jail. How much is that going to cost us? Commissioners, I had ten contract cities as Sheriff. Some of them very small, like Superior. They couldn't afford to pay what the major cities were paying. So we came out with this scheme and someone paid five thousand dollars a year for twenty-four-seven full-fledged coverage. The Board of County Commissioners and I ensured that those communities were covered. Because it's our duty. We all raised that hand. We all took that oath. Our duty is to protect you or County Commissioners. I don't buy the, the line of my budget. Folks, I served through the Great Recession. I had the displeasure of having my budget cut thirteen times. But if you want, I can show you a list of accomplishments that took place without a budget because we funded what was important. Don't tell me we don't have budget. There are ways around this. There are partnerships we can get into. But we were going to need your help to get through this. Every small town in this county looks for a few to help. They come to you for help. I'm hoping that you'll be there for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kenezvich.
I had one more thing. Sorry, I kind of got excited back there. But I do have a small town Mayor Granger from May Valerio and Mayor Clausen from Barrowell here. And if you guys have any questions for them or anything like I said, I just needed, we need support. And they're my support, and I hope you guys are my support, and I hope we can move along forward. And thank you. And I have, if you guys have any questions for me.
Sure. First off, thanks for coming over. Appreciate the communication and reaching out to get on the agenda this morning. Obviously, you and I had a phone conversation last week and appreciate your time for that. You know, I, I want to be adamantly clear that the Sheriff is his own elected official. And he does not work for the Board of County Commissioners, and I believe you understand that. We had that conversation, so, you know, I, I can understand some of your, you know, complaints and struggles you're dealing with. At the same time, I don't think it's my place to tell the Sheriff how to run his department. Yes, we obviously have budgetary oversight within that realm, but I don't know all the ins and outs of your conversations with the Sheriff and the different services that are lacking or needed and what it's even for, if it's just court or if it's a drug issue. You know, I did briefly have a conversation with the Sheriff in regards to that. As Mr. Kenezvich pointed out, it sounds like, you know, that's, that's when DCI is engaged for any of that investigation because there isn't a drug team for the county. So he was aware of one particular issue there. I asked him to pull a call load over the course of this year because you had indicated, you know, you'd like to see, you know, one to two times a week with, you know, some patrol services throughout the community. To date, there's been a hundred calls out there. Now that's area, so that can be not necessarily just town specific, but you know, I know statutorily, the Sheriff is required to enforce state statute issues, but not necessarily, you know, town ordinances. And so I think that's where your question comes into effect in regards to an LOU or an MOU and what that may look like. I believe some other Commissioners have had conversations on that. I think if I understand it properly, some of that has been attempted in the past in some of the other smaller communities. But I guess my, my first question would be, are you looking for a long-term solution? Is there an immediate issue that needs addressed more on a short-term plan, or what is kind of what you're after?
To be honest, I think just kind of like I told my, my Community Resource Officer, the small towns, when police presence is there, people are going to straighten up. I mean, we know our towns. Not much. I mean, we, we just want to drive through and communication a little bit. That's all we're asking. And then when we do get a call or when one of our citizens call, this happened, for instance, a citizen called, he was broken into, Sheriff never even went out there. I heard it through the grapevine. I made my Community Resource Officer go up there and see if we could help this gentleman out. He yelled at my Community Resource Officer, said he thought he was the Sheriff at first. And he's like, hey, I'm just here for the town of Superior. Just, we heard you had this. And he's like, Sheriff's ain't even responding out here. So that was our last incident. So we're not asking for much. I mean, like you said, with like Mike Lowell signed that one, and at the end of it, it says, you know, they're, they recognize the budget and we're willing to help you, you know? I, I know for a fact, the last administration before me would call the Sheriff's all the time for nothing. And it was mostly on me, and they come out and nothing would happen. They were wasting the Sheriff's time. And nothing would happen. They were wasting the sheriff's time on them. So I hope the last administration didn't ruin this for the new ones that we're trying to, you know? So. I do not like bogus calls, you know? I think we're wasting the county's time by doing that, so. As I stand in front of you, that'll never happen in my administration. I always take the sheriff serious and. And his duties and his deputies, but. We're not asking for much. Just drive-throughs two days a week. Communicate with us. That's it. And that's just me. My other.
Sure.
Small-town mayors might have something different, but I believe with. All my region meetings, talking to the small towns, all we want is police presence. People will straighten up. As soon as, and if they think they're going to do something two days later, well, guess what? Cops coming back. They ain't ever going to get nothing done. And that's just us knowing our people out there.
Questions or comments, Commissioner?
Chairman.
Commissioner Richards?
Well, thanks for coming over. You know, I heard a lot in the last twenty minutes about what you. Think the sheriff's responsibility is in providing law enforcement services to our small incorporated towns. What I didn't hear is what is your own responsibility as small incorporated towns? To provide law enforcement services to your own constituents? Because you are incorporated towns, and with that comes a responsibility to provide the services that a town provides.
Right.
I heard, well, it shouldn't be a budget issue. But at the same time, what I'm hearing is it's a budget issue that the towns can't afford to provide these services. And in the back of my mind, I'm hearing my own budget. Process that we just went through where we had to cut millions of dollars from our own budget. And turn down capital requests from our own entities, and you're asking us. To provide an MOU where we would be providing the money for those law enforcement services to the small towns. So where do we find that balance?
Well, like Mr. Kanesvich said, if we're entering into something, we could pay you guys six thousand dollars, something affordable. Where on my side, I hired my community resource officer. Not. Not law. I'm trying to think. Not, not a law enforcement guy, but that's where I was watching my budget, just to help. Clear our nuisances and ordinances out of our. For our town. That's where. I was helping policing my town with the budget that I had. And with the volunteer, my budget's still pretty good. But I wasn't asking you guys for money or nothing. I'm asking you guys to hopefully persuade the sheriff to help us just a little bit, just to pop. I mean, it don't cost money to do what we're doing here. But. That's what I'm trying to do. I'm asking for nothing, and we haven't even talked about money or nothing, so I don't know. What, your budget's not hurting right now.
Patrol officers from the county which were tasked with patrolling to.
But we're willing to pay, but we're also.
Cost money, right?
How much?
Every dollar counts, obviously.
Yeah.
Obviously, every dollar counts.
Well, all I can ask is. If. The sheriff's listening, please help us out, our small towns. Yeah, the board can't do nothing apparently, but.
Hang on, we're allowed to ask questions. We let you speak, so we're just trying to understand the topic more. Obviously. As you and I spoke, there's. Not a whole lot this board can do when it's in another elected office, but if we can have a reasonable conversation about it, then that's what we're here to do.
Alright.
So we're here to hear you out, but we've got some questions too.
I hope I answered yours. Bye.
Were you done, Commissioner? Okay. Mr. Slaughter, do you have something?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up, you know, my name was brought up with respect to this, and certainly I have been a party to this conversation. I received a call from Mayor Wolf several months ago concerning this issue. Expressing his concerns and bringing up the concept of an LOU or an MOU with respect to. The sheriff's office and the town of Superior. We had discussions. He had several other concerns, and I volunteered at that point in time to help facilitate. A meeting with the county sheriff along with. I, what my thought was, was to do it with one of our other commissioners and our legal representation. And so I tried to coordinate a meeting, and this had been ongoing for some time. I know that there had been previous conversations. Between the sheriff's department and the town prior to this. But in my conversation with the sheriff. When I first contacted him, he wanted to think about whether he was willing to do a meeting again or not in this situation. The following day, as I was preparing a message to go out, which I believe that I had actually sent an invitation out to those parties. To do, to have a meeting with respect to this issue and to talk about some of the concerns of the town of Superior and this LOU concept. The sheriff made it abundantly clear that he felt like he had had enough conversations with the town of Superior. He did not have any further obligations under his. Under his office to do that, and he did not want to have another conversation. So at that time, I canceled the meeting, and that was the last conversation that I've had with respect to this. So it was one of those situations where the elected official. In that situation, the county sheriff had determined he had had enough conversations on this and did not want to have another conversation. And at that point in time, we certainly have to respect that. But I do believe that we can, in these situations, try and help facilitate a better communication. And that was my intent when I tried to facilitate this meeting, so. I certainly understand, and I have heard the comments and the. The questions that have come from the mayor and the town of Superior, and I understand those problems that the small towns have. But I also understand from the sheriff's perspective what, where he was coming from with respect to this. So it makes it very difficult as a board, as you say, because we technically do not have any authority other than budgetary authority over the sheriff. So I hope that at some point, we can find some way that we can help in these issues.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Any other questions or comments, Commissioners? Commissioner Toman?
Well, we're sorry you're having these issues, but you are a municipality and. I sympathize or empathize with. The situation you have, but maybe you do need to redirect some of your resources to be more focused in your community to provide that law enforcement as you have already reached out to do that. I know Sheriff Grosnikel campaigned on reaching out to the whole county, but you realize he's having a very difficult time. Hiring enough patrol deputies. He's not fully staffed right now, and this county is huge. I know he's gone to Barrow when they had issues out there, so I'm not trying to defend him or anything, but I think he has made the effort with the resources that he has. And so I'm not denying that you have an issue, but I just wanted to point out a few facts also.
Thank you. Any other feedback or questions? Well, we appreciate you coming over. Obviously. The issues between the town and Superior and the sheriff, and we're aware of. Some of your ongoing struggles with that. I would assume that the sheriff will have a response into some of this and. We'll see where it goes from there, but I appreciate. You coming over and speaking to us, and I don't know if we have any role in that conversation, but we'll entertain it if so.
Well, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners, and sorry I got a little rowdy there a minute, but I just, I'm very passionate about this and. And law enforcement and emergency services are very critical. And if it takes thirty to forty minutes to get to my town and two and a half hours to get to Barrow. I really think that we should network and try to get something happening. I really do, and I'm there for you guys. If you need any. Need any insight from small towns. I'll provide it and hopefully we can move forward.
Okay.
Thank you guys for having me.
Thanks, Mayor Wolf. Thank you, gentlemen. Commissioners, this is going to move us right along into. Technically, it's item four, but we added one, which is the MRG grant application for the Sweetwater County Library, so I'm going to call it four A, and then we'll do the four B, excuse me. Which will be the annual report from the library. So with us. This was part of the amended edition is Christina Marshill, who's going to discuss. This potential grant opportunity. Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, hang in there because I think a certain director might have some chocolate for you, so. Especially for a certain commissioner. So first, thank you so much for adding this to the agenda and for putting up with my emails since last Friday. So I'm referring to. The email from, the most recent email from yesterday afternoon with big capital letters that says modified agenda. So as the chairman pointed out and graciously allowed this to get on the agenda. We are requesting to submit a mineral royalty grant or MRG application. To the Wyoming Office of State Lands and Investments. So the project, you're. Very familiar with the HVAC replacement project at White Mountain Library. Unfortunately, we were unsuccessful with the Wyoming's Library Community. Project Fund Application. So I learned last week, at the end of the week, that. This deadline is this week, so we have two more days to submit the application. So. In terms of this application, it's pretty unique in that we have not applied for this funding for over seven years. In fact, the last time was. A fire brush truck in two thousand seventeen. So we don't abuse our requests to slip, but. This project is very important for the community. I'm going to refer to the resolution. For the purpose of, this is to provide necessary public services, including access to free public computers. High-quality internet and technology for work. Education and medical activities at the White Mountain Library. Without getting into many details, the White Mountain Library, along with all the libraries, are used by a lot of vulnerable populations to conduct their work. So the HVAC system is failing, and I would like to point out that both Lindsay Travis, the director of the library, her chair, board chair, Megan. Jensen is here, as well as Public Works Director Gene Legursky. He has a report that shows that this project actually is failing. The system is failing much sooner than anticipated. So. The budget is a request for, or the budget is one million ninety-three thousand nine hundred sixty dollars. It requires a fifty percent grant match. The county would be responsible for four hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred or nine hundred and eighty dollars. With the library approving one hundred thousand dollars towards that match. I previously explained how we could cover that match over two fiscal years. Attached to that email are the two documents that require signatures. And this requires signature in blue ink, Mr. Chairman. So with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions, as well as those real experts that are here could also answer.
Thanks, Christina. Questions on this grant application, Commissioners? Commissioner Toman?
Not on the application, but Mr. Legursky, the HVAC system, when that failed, does that also fail the heat system for the winter? Or is this an urgent crisis right now if that heat system is also affected? Cause you can take a little bit of heat, but if we don't have heat in the winter, it could be serious.
Yes, it's not, it's not failing. It's not imminent. We are just having problems with it more and more frequently. If you look at the report that was done in two thousand twenty, this HVAC system was supposed to be twenty thirty is their earliest. That they thought it would fail. That's based on industry standards. You know, even in our own buildings, we may have three rooftop units and one might go out earlier and the other one, you know, one lasts fifteen years, one lasts twenty-five years. That's how they get the averages. So yes, if this goes out and we can't find all the parts in the middle winter, it's a problem. Along with any heat, I mean, in your house, if you go without heat in your house for a couple of days and it's thirty below and you got wind coming out of the right direction, it's a problem. So this is an immediate need because of the failing nature of it, but it is an imminent. The problem is, is right now with anything like that, we're playing on the craps table, and we're just hoping it doesn't break down at the right time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gene. Additional comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, Christina, and refresh my memory with respect to this. In our budget. And when we were anticipating the need for this HVAC system. It was anticipated that there was a grant available to fund this. So I'm assuming we got word that that grant was not. Going to be. Allowed. So in looking at this request, the four hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars that we would have to come up with is something that was not budgeted in our. Fiscal twenty-five budget. It would be an unanticipated expense we would be looking at at this point in time. Am I correct in those assumptions or in those, is my memory correct with respect to those things?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Slaughter, great question for clarification. I will refer you to the email from last Friday, but I'll summarize that we did budget for this and the grant projects at one hundred percent. We were unsuccessful. However, in this case, I explain that in other grant projects where. We are applying for, usually we have leftover match money. And so the timeline for this slip grant is that they will not consider it until February of two thousand twenty-five. It takes usually one to two months to get a contract out. So I anticipate that if we were to first do engineering design to start bidding it out. That would get us enough to fiscal year twenty-six to budget the remaining match if we're successful. In the worst-case scenario, of course, we would have to do a budget amendment in fiscal year twenty-five, but I can assure you, we would look at all. Currently budgeted sources of funding before proceeding.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Additional? Mr. Toman?
Can we use some of our ARPA, ARPA PIL? We need to get that spent.
So the famous word, where we failed, and they've previously funded HVAC projects was ARPA, type of ARPA. So again, to refer to that email last week, I would suggest in fiscal year twenty-six. Using some of that for allowable expenses that could free up some other funding for the county. But Commissioner Toman, are you talking about fiscal year twenty-five if we had to do this right now?
Anyway.
Yes, that's always on the table.
I think the intent is just the timing of it. There may be. Should this grant application be awarded? There could be some construction or engineering costs in fiscal year twenty-five. But moving forward, more than likely, the project will fall under fiscal year twenty-six, and so at that time, we can address whatever funds may be left over with. Grants and/or ARPA PIL or wherever we have a budget.
Mr. Chairman, that's correct, and in fiscal year twenty-five, we could reclassify some expenses with the ARPA PIL. You have to understand, in my perspective, it's always to have the easiest and cleanest audit. So payroll expenses, as an example, are very easy to test for compliance.
Do you have some feedback or questions?
Keep the candles going, Travis.
Well, thank you for the background on that, and no problem squeezing this in. It's important. It's unfortunate that. The other application didn't come through, but I appreciate your efforts in trying to find other avenues.
And Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, the county is the official sponsor. The library is an ineligible entity, although this project is allowable, and I confirm that with the Office of State Lands.
Okay.
Yeah.
With that, Commissioners, I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-four oh nine GR oh one. To submit an MRG grant application to the Wyoming Office of State Lands and Investments. And authorize the chairman to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
I would second.
Second by Commissioner Toman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Motion's unanimous. Thanks, Christina.
Fingers crossed. Thank you.
Appreciate your efforts. That will move us right along into item four B, which is the Sweetwater County Library System Annual Report. With us this morning is Lindsay Travis, Library Director. And I believe Board Chair, I think Chair Megan Jensen.
Do you have some handouts and chocolate for everyone?
Oh, thank goodness. That'll keep Mary happy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm purple, too. Good. Good job, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Morning, ladies.
Morning, Chairman West and commissioners. Before I start my annual report, I do want to just really let the commission know that it's been fantastic working with Christina on these projects and with Jean. They are two, I think, of the hardest-working people in the county. I really appreciate their help with the library system, so. So just to start off with, this month is Library Card Sign-up Month, so we collected some stories from community members about library services. And I wanted to just start today's presentation with a couple of quotes that really stood out about the library services in our county. One of them was, "Our library is a great resource for our community, and the staff is knowledgeable and friendly and always willing to help." That was from Green River Mayor Pete Rust. Another quote, "The library is probably the most important building we have in the community," and that was from Joan Cockins from the U.S. Postal Service. So I think that kind of shows what our library services are to our community. Overall, we had a really great year for fiscal year '24. We do feel that the library system is fulfilling its mission of improving the quality of life in Sweetwater County. The annual report that I handed out to you has some statistics in the middle. We're going to kind of go over those quickly. To start with, the number of programs that we held in fiscal year '24 was increased by 23.8%. So we held 979 programs in the library system over the course of the year. That's more than two programs a day that we were open, which I think is fantastic. That's bringing people into our, into our library services. We redid a little bit of rearranging with the library staff this year, where we moved three people into full-time positions where their only focus is on library programs. So that really has helped bring people in to the buildings, helped create a system-wide programs for the, for the community to bring people in. If we, if, when we bring people in for programs, we are also promoting literacy, promoting all the other services that we have, and just keep, keep people learning throughout the, the year. Our program attendance was also up 16.2%, with nearly 40,000 people attending library programs across the county. While our checkouts were down a little bit, 2.9%, the, if you break down those numbers a little bit, most of our reduced checkouts were because of, of the physical items. Our digital items are actually checking out significantly higher at 12.8%. We set some records over the last year on how many digital items have checked out. There has been a shift in library books, especially audiobooks. People are not checking out books on CD anymore. They're checking out digital items. Because I don't know about anybody else, but I don't have a CD player in my car anymore. They don't make cars like that. So people are checking out digital items, Bluetoothing them to their cars and to their other devices, and that's, that has caused a little bit of a shift in the number of physical items checked out. Our meeting room rooms are used very heavily. We had a 5.9% increase over the course of fiscal year '24. That's 1,493 times that those rooms were used across the county, with the White Mountain Library having the most usage at 992 times. So these meeting room renovations that we have coming up, those will be significant to help our community and help provide spaces for public meetings. Our computer uses 20,850 over fiscal year '24. That's a lot of people coming in and using our, our services. They're using computers to print out things, to apply for jobs, to just be able to Google things on, online. There's a lot of people in our community that do not have the access to those services in their homes, and they use the libraries for that. We also have free Wi-Fi in our buildings, which has been accessed about 900 times per month over the course of the last fiscal year. We had great attendance also in our branch libraries in our rural communities with 10,451 people visiting those libraries. We have great partnerships with our rural communities. We just recently renewed and extended a lease at our Superior Branch, which is in the town building, that will ensure library services there until 2029. It's a great to be able to provide these services for every member of our community. So the rural branches are very significant. We have those partnerships with lots of our small communities, where we're using one of their buildings to provide library services. Couple other things I have in this annual report, I have a page in here that has some additional services. We talk a lot about the Community Fine Art Center. If you haven't been there in a while, it's definitely a gem in our community, and it's great to be connected to the library service, to the library buildings. It's part of the Rock Springs Library and has a great collection of artwork that is provided by Sweetwater County School District Number One. And then we also have rotating exhibits that are in there. They also host art classes and community performances. 8,341 people attended and visited the Community Fine Art Center in fiscal year '24. We also have the Children's Discovery Center in the Rock Springs Library, which is just a fantastic service in our community. It's a fun place for kids to attend for free. Lots of hands-on learning experiences there for people to use year-round. We had nearly 11,000 people attend the Discovery Center in fiscal year '24. And then something that you might not be aware of, we have Spanish language, a Spanish language collection at the Rock Springs Library. And we've also expanded some of our Spanish-like language services by providing a monthly storytime in Spanish at the White Mountain Library. That has been well, well-attended, and it was definitely a need that we had in our community. I also wanted to talk just a little bit about the Library Foundation. The Sweetwater County Library Foundation is an organization that provides funding for library services above and beyond what the county tax dollars can support. Over the course of fiscal year '24, the foundation gave the library system $20,000 to support the Summer Reading Program, which is one of the key programs that we have in the libraries. So that, that funding went towards performers, all of our programs over the, the summer prizes. The purple cups that I gave you today were from the Library Foundation. They pay for those to help support reading and learning throughout the summer when the kids aren't in school. And so we have a, a summer reading program that's for kids and for adults, because when adults read, kids read. And so we encourage everyone in the community to read. The, this last summer, we had close to 2,000 people participate in our summer reading program, but the programs that we had held at the library had nearly 12,000 people attend. The foundation also recently provided $10,000 to put in a permanent story walk in this Green River, in Green River, around the rec center. A story walk has, is a, there's displays that are along the trail around the Green River that will, around the Green River Rec Center that will have picture book pages that we will change out every month or two, so families can go walk around there and read a book while they are exploring the town. They also provided some plaques for the mass graves at the Green River Cemetery. That was for the, you know, the Green River Library was, was built on an old cemetery, and those mass graves are from the people who were in that cemetery. The foundation also consistently funds the library's Discovery Center, the Seed Library, and the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten Program. That's a early literacy program that we have in the libraries, where we encourage families and children to read 1,000 books before they start kindergarten. We had a big party for the 1,000 books before summer, before kindergarten this last Saturday, and there were 170 people that attended it at the Green River Library. So that's a very popular program in our community. Also, in fiscal year '24, we did complete a few capital projects, the carpet replacements at the Sweetwater County Library and the White Mountain Library. We put in some new front doors at the White Mountain Library, and we did some awning, painting and repairs. We really do appreciate the county's support in those projects, and then all of the things that we're going to do in the future. That's what I have. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thanks, Lindsay. It's always fascinating to me when you bring over the numbers and showcase how many people come in and out of the libraries, and whether it's checking out books or online subscriptions or whatever the case is. It's, you guys do a lot of good things and appreciate you keeping up with the capital needs, too. Sometimes those are never fun when you have other ideas or plans for services, but obviously crucially important, so. Appreciate the update. Feedback, commissioners? Questions?
I, I do have a question.
I figured. Commissioner Toman? Just teasing.
What are your hours of operation? I know for a while you weren't able to fully keep the doors open. Are you able to do that better now?
Yes, we are open from 10 to 7, Monday through Thursday, in the Green River and Rock Springs Buildings and White Mountain Library. On Fridays, we're open 10 to 5. Saturdays, we're open 12 to 5. So we did increase the hours a little bit. We have reduced hours in the summer because people just don't come in after 6 o'clock in the summer when it's nice outside. So, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Well, thank you both for coming over, as always, and bringing us goodies and keep up the good work. It's always fun when it's exciting news to share, and it's always positive. So that's certainly the case with you guys every year, and we look forward to that.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, and good luck on that grant. This is going to move us right along into item 5, commissioners. Before we start that, I wanted to recognize Senator Cold for joining us in attendance this morning. And with that, next on the agenda is the Miracle League of Sweetwater County Wyoming's request for permanent utilization of a large section at the Jamestown County Park. With us this morning is Donna Tramp, the Chairman of the Miracle League of Sweetwater County Board.
Good morning. Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for this opportunity. On behalf of our Miracle League Board and Committee, usually we have more of our committees attending with us, especially my, I'm missing my Brittany Montgomery. She's the one that does our presentations, so bear with me as I'm going to try to do this for my first time. But we have, let's see, this is, well, I'll start off with our motto. So first of all, thank you on behalf of our, our Miracle League team, and we want to share with you that the Miracle League of Sweetwater County has given the opportunity for every child to play baseball. We actually started, let's see. I pushed on the next. Sorry, I don't know how to work this computer. Okay, so we started, we're formerly the Challenger League. We started in 2013. We started a baseball team for special needs kids. We had the, the Special Director of Education, Mr. Demery, said that we need to be able to have a place for our special needs kids to play. In this community, we don't really have very many places and activities for our children to be able to be a part of activities. So in 2013, I hooked up with the Green River Little League in, in Rock Spring, or in Green River, and we were under their umbrella. They, they took care of all of our equipment and ordering our equipment and our uniforms, and they also paid for our insurance. We were very grateful for that. We were playing on the Strats Field, which we are still currently playing on. It is a dirt field, and as we grew bigger, we have found that we have had more wheelchair kids, and we've had more kids with walkers. We have a child that has signed up that is 80% blind, and we've had some injuries, balls, you know, trips in the dirt. There's some potholes in some of the places. And my goal and dream was like, I really would like to create a field that all of our kids can play on. And throughout the years, last year, I had the opportunity to, and I was discovering the fields and I ran across this Miracle League organization. It is a nonprofit organization. They have 350 fields throughout the United States. They have three in another country, as in Australia, Canada and Mexico. And the more I got to read about it, I was like, oh, I really want to be a part of this program. So we signed up with the Miracle League Organization. I went to training last year in Florida. They have Nationals every year. So what they do is, in Florida, they, they present the, their field and their national, or their, their players, and then they invite two players from all over the United States that are a part of the Miracle League, and they have their kids playing throughout the United States, playing each other. And it was so neat to, to see that and be a part of that. And so also, I got a lot of training through that. And so when I came back, I was, created the board for our Miracle League and created a committee. And through that, we have been out in the community trying to petition who we are and what we're wanting to do. And that is part of the reason why I'm sharing this with you today. Okay, so. Okay, hold on. On this one? Okay, thank you. All right, so this, this is, it shows where we are, where they have a Puerto Rico field and a field in, in Canada. So these are mostly outdoor fields. There are some fields that are covered. Okay, and so that is going to be my long-term goal, and I'll share that here in a minute with you. But all of these fields, there we go. Oh, that's our short-term goal. Okay, so all of these fields are turfed for the wheelchairs and the walkers, for the players, all of our players to be able to play on. This year, Nationals is in Georgia, which is the very first field that they started in the year 2000. So I'm excited to be able to be a part of that. We are actually bringing two of our players from the Miracle League to Georgia to play against the other kids. And when I was there last year in Florida, they were asking, of course, where I was from. I said, I'm from Wyoming. I said, there is not a Miracle League in Wyoming. We'll be the very first one. And I was excited about that, and they said, oh, we can't wait until we can come to Wyoming. And I was like, oh, boy. We have a lot to cut, come out. But there was a, a lot of, about 600 people that were there last year, and what they do in Miracle League is that they go all over to, to all the fields every year, and they have Nationals. So when we are established, have our field, and we get to invite Nationals to come here. That's how awesome would that be for our community? To be able to have people from all over the United States be a part of our Miracle League field. Not only that, each Miracle League organization has a Major League Baseball player that is attached to their organization, and I'm still in, in the hunt of looking for one, but we will have, once we get ours, we will have them be a part of our opening day. So that'll bring in a lot of attention, a lot of attraction, and also a lot of, a lot of support in our community. So our long-term goal, okay, so we, we are looking not only for our field, but we are also looking for ADA bathrooms. We want to be able to build an ADA playground, which we're working on a grant for that through the state. That's one of my, Brittany Montgomery, the one that created all this. She's doing that as well. Also, we are wanting to eventually build a Miracle, Miracle League stadium. We want it to be covered so that we can play in it all year round. So not only are we wanting to do baseball, we're going to make our turf big enough so our kids, not just our disabled kids, not just the Miracle League, but the community is going to be open for everyone to come practice soccer, play soccer, have batting cages, have a track around, kind of like how we have in our football field, have a track around the outside of our turf field. And then, so that all of the people in our community can utilize our field. And so our first phase is to build our field, build our ADA bathrooms, and build our ADA playground. We're working on grants for that, and also community, we're getting our name out. I've been able to have a few shows out at the, in the community to pass out flyers and to raise money. We do have Plan One as our architect, so we have that starting our development. And so our next stage is to get our property, because everybody's asking where our location's going to be. We did, we did go in front of the city because we were wanting to play around where, in, in the spot down at Strats, where we have our field now. Thank you. And so because that property is BLM, and we, they have been working with BLM. And it hasn't been really opened for us to do what we are wanting to do now. They said it could happen in the future. But we've been, we really want to get, see this work. And I had a conversation with Gene Legursky and he said, we do have property that might suit your needs with, without having to go through BLM. And I was excited about it because I would really, really like to see this project get started in our community as soon as possible. And so Gene here, we were looking at the Jamestown field. We felt like it might be a little bit out of the way, but then once I, because we do have Rock Springs players, we have Granger, we have Farson, we, we're all over Sweetwater County. We timed it and basically it is the same time to get from Green River exit to strats as it is to the greener, green river exit to the Lowe's gas station. So when we, we went to visit your field out at the, out at the county, we drove in and we thought, oh, how awesome would this be? You, you drive in, you have the field on the right, you have the playgrounds on the left. You know, you have your parking lot and how you, there is enough room out there to expand and to build and to develop what our dreaming and goal is for our kids and with, or I should say our players and our children in our community. No, you're good. I am not a computer tech person. So that's why I'm like, you just do you, go ahead and do that and, and then while I try to talk. But as you drive in, as you see, it says Jamestown County Park, welcome, or welcome to Jamestown County Park. And on the right is where they have the, the field area already. And then on the left, you have some very, very outdated playground. And I would love to be the person or our Miracle League Board would love to be the team that helps update your equipment. And then also I love the fact that if we can have our outdoor building with our Miracle League on the top of our outdoor building, that you can even see off of the freeway and how that, that it would be definitely an attraction. And I love the fact that we are going to be, we are actually, because I'm a part of the organization now, the first one in the state of Wyoming. We have, there's one in, I've visited two fields already. They have one in the, in West Jordan in Utah. They also have one in Denver and they have the Colorado Rockies supporting the ones in Denver. I don't know if I'm going to be able to get another one from there or not, but I did hear that there is a baseball player that the parents live in Cheyenne. So that's going to be my next goal after we get the location to work on getting us a major league baseball player to be a part of our organization and support. Any questions?
Yeah, no, thank you, Donna, for coming over and telling us the story. It's the first I've heard of it. I think it's pretty remarkable. It's pretty what an opportunity for, you know, the whole Miracle League in, in general, especially if we can make it happen here. It's a, a huge need within Sweetwater County is sporting venues and additional, you know, resources for that. There's various, you know, indoor facilities throughout the state that you know, host a lot of large events. And unfortunately in Sweetwater, we're not allowed to do a lot of that because we don't have that, that capacity.
So would this allow the, the opportunity for us to host events if we had a big enough area for teams to come in and, and play or play against each other, host tournaments and such?
Well, I think it most certainly would. Part of the the difficulty when it comes to making that reality is much of what you've already highlighted, you know, raising the funds, but then there's also who operates it, the maintenance, the upkeep, you know, utilities, et cetera. And so what is, or what has the Miracle League done in those other states in that realm?
They have a full-time director and a full-time maintenance person that we are all volunteers, of course, right now. We don't have anybody, but we were hoping that once we do develop and that we can lease out to different organizations or baseball teams. I've even heard, you know, if you guys get a batting cage and we can come over, you know, and use yours, especially during the winter. When it's raining and storming and stuff. And I've already had the Legion from the baseball team in Rock Springs said they would come utilize it. So if we have some enough money coming in to lease out our facility and have somebody manage it and then also pay for the maintenance and the upkeep and the insurance. Cause you know, it's gonna, this was our first year that we had to pay for insurance for our baseball team just to play for six weeks down at strats. We had to come up with a million dollar coverage through the city, you know, or to provide the city so that we can actually play on their field. So we'll probably be doing that again next year because of course, we're probably not going to be able to have our field developed by next year. But that is, that is our goal, our long, our short-term and long-term goal.
Questions or comments, Commissioner? Commissioner Slaughter?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I'm, you know, kind of amazed at, at what you're trying to put together here. Uh, I really commend your spirit in doing this. Some of my fondest memories in youth were playing baseball and I would hope that everyone would have the opportunity to do that. And that's something that lasts a lifetime with you. I see this as being a very grandiose plan. I, you, you talked about having already contracted with Plan One Architects. Have you got some concept at this point in time, what the facility will cost or what you're looking at or it's, it looks to me, this is going to be a huge project.
It is, it is gonna be.
A covered building and things of that nature. It's going to take millions of dollars to do something of that nature. So, I mean, it's, it's a great project and I, I have no idea what type of other fundings or sources are out there. I, I just, as the chair referenced, you know, some of the operation and maintenance concerns with this. If, if we were to do something in conjunction with a county park is, is a little bit scary to me. I was not aware of this until it came in our packet. I would like to talk with, I'm, I'm the liaison to our public works department. I would like to talk with Mr. Legursky a little bit about his feelings on this too. But I, I see what you're trying to accomplish and I really commend you. I, I hope you're successful in this. It's, it's a big, big job, but it's something that, as, as the chairman stated, once again, this is something that's very, very needed in our community. So.
And we would all love to see this happen. And I, my, my view on it is three hundred and fifty other organizations were able to do this. You know, we can do it too. And I am still learning as far as how to go about that, but through the research that I've done on other Miracle League fields and visiting them as well. To start it probably about three million dollars and it'd be about five. And that's it. That comes down to having the covered building with the scoreboard. And so we have a sponsorship opportunity that will be able to go out to different companies and businesses to say, hey, would you like to be a part of our making of our field right here in the state of Wyoming? Your name, your business can be on our dugout or on the, the, the plate of the baseball plate or on the stadium, you know, somewhere around the, on the fence, just so they can buy their own spots. And that's how they've done it through the other Miracle League's fields is people and organizations. And of course, our businesses, we're not that big of a city where we have big giant corporations that are representing our Wyoming community, but there are a lot that are out there that I am still learning and that's part of my training as well. When I go out there this year, actually, we're going to be going to Georgia in a few weeks. I'll be learning more about that. And then they also have training throughout the year as well that I can get online and, and view. Any other questions?
So what is your ask of us? Is it that you're wanting to purchase this land or ask for, how does it work? Obviously the county owns the park. It doesn't sound like you're after the entirety of the park, but maybe a portion of it. Is that contingent upon, you know, what comes back with the architectural design and costs and how the, you know, functionality of the operation works? Kind of give me some help on that.
Yes, um, so that it, it, it depends on, I mean, we do have, you know, the architect that is working on it. They haven't given us any amount yet on how to start it. I do have a couple of businesses that said they would help with the concrete and the, and the, the grounding, but as far as what we're asking from you, we're basically, like he said, he didn't know anything about it. You guys didn't know anything about it. We're trying to get this out in the community and seeing who wants to be a part of this. And then our next goal was to establish land, which we were unsuccessful with the city. And we were hoping that this, having this opportunity with the land that you have out in Jamestown might be something that you guys might be interested in us developing on your property. So basically that's what we're asking is the use or, I mean, however is it that you guys want us to lease? Do you want us to purchase? That would be up to you guys on how you would handle that. So does that answer your question or did I skip something? Okay.
Somewhat, yeah.
Okay.
It just, obviously when you enter into agreements, when they're requested permanent utilization, that raises some concern because a lot of times what we see is, and I admire your optimism. I think it's a wonderful thing that you're trying to do and I hope you're successful. I certainly support that. But if it takes off and then you run into, now we have to replace the turf. For now, we have to replace the roof or, you know, who pays for that? And if it's on county property, is that the Miracle League or does that?
That's the Miracle League, one hundred percent.
And so some of that I think is just some of the
Sure.
paperwork that we would need to, you know, work out. But obviously this isn't their first rodeo. I, I think it's a wonderful.
Yeah. So the turf, turf fields, I did research on that. They last six to 10 years. They even last longer if they're covered. And they're allowed for our kids to be able to play on all year long. But when we're down at strats and where we have a little rain or we have some snow, we're unable to play. And their city is very strict on us being, having the ground completely dry before we can play. And so that hinders the opportunity for our kids to be able to play ball. So.
So I guess as a response to your requests is just, you know, the idea of us being in support of seeing what this would look like moving forward. Is that satisfy what you're after today? Or do you need something more from that?
If you guys are willing to, you know, discuss it and look at the, you know, the, the chances of us being able to build. Our goal is to secure a property so that we can move forward. That is what most people are asking. Where's your property? If I'm going to support you, where, where are you going to build that? So that's the most probably question that different companies that I've been able to, you know, present as far as this is what we're doing. Would you like to be a part of it? Well, where's your field? You know, where's your location? And so if you want us to donate, we need to have, we need to have some, some groundwork. And so that would be the location of the, the property or the Miracle League and also the Plan One Architect so that we can show that. They're, they're, right now they're in the process of doing, writing up a rendering so that we could take around to our companies.
Okay.
I mean, I don't have to have an answer right now. I'm, I'm open to coming back, you know? I know this is a, a big, a big deal. And so I just wanted, really wanted to present it to you, you guys, and see if this is something that can work.
Sure. Well, we appreciate that. I think in general, we're all open to the idea, I would assume.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards?
I've made no secret out of the fact that I think our parklands in Sweetwater County are way underutilized. And I think this would be a fantastic idea as a way to utilize some of our parklands, but a lot of i's are going to have to be dotted and t's crossed before we could even think of dedicating a, any, you know, permanent lease or anything towards that. We need to have a, a, a large discussion about how we utilize our parks. And this would just be a part of that larger discussion. If you wanted an answer today, obviously we couldn't give you one.
No, and that's okay.
Know if we could give you one in the next few months because there's a lot that goes behind something like this. Including, including the contracts for use that we would have to adopt. So I, I look forward to hearing, you know, Mr. Commissioner Slaughter's take on it and Mr. Legursky's take on it in a, in a more in-depth discussion going forward. I think it's a great idea.
So what you would like from me and our committee is for us to have a contract drawn up and see plan, okay? And, and present it again. Is that what you would like?
Yeah. I, Mr. Chairman, ideas are great.
Right.
Plans are better.
Sure.
And plans with funding behind them are even.
Okay. Okay, great.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I just think, you know, we would need a formal proposal for, for us to move forward on this.
Sure.
Like every, I, I see everyone looking in, in their minds. And, you know, it is, it's a, it's a great, it's a great idea and, and a huge undertaking, but I, I see the excitement and that you've got. That's what it takes. It takes several people who have got that commitment. But yeah, I, I, I think as a board, we would just have to have a formal proposal. We can look more into it at that point in time. And, and we can certainly do some of the, the research behind the scenes. You know, it's kind of, kind of hard when you get hit with something this big and to, to try and process it.
Sure.
Something like that, I think down the road would, would be beneficial for us and we can talk about it then.
Great. Okay.
Thanks very much.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it so much.
Good luck. Okay, Commissioner, still under tab C, this is going to bring us to item number six, which is amendment number one to the agreement for the Sweetwater County Public Works Combined Facility to establish a guaranteed maximum price and contract time. With us this morning is Public Works Director Gene Legursky. Commissioners, I do need to recuse myself from this discussion. This project, when it was originally went out to bid, the place in which I'm employed turned in a bid for that. And obviously a different route was taken here with the C M A R and the company in which I'm employed provided a budget number and intends to bid on the project. So at this time, if I could hand it over to Commissioner Richards to run chair, I will step out.
Mr. Legursky, the floor is yours. Thank you. A little bit of background, if you guys remember, we bid this hard bid back in January. The bids came in significantly over budget. To refresh your memory, all in with the alternates, the bid was seven point four million, seven million, four hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. I came back to the commission and said, hey, let's look at C M A R. We went through the process to engage different firms. We selected Groot House Construction. And from then we have been working with them closely to figure out where, where we could shave budgets, what we could still get for the money that we have budgeted. And to make sure that it, we got the building that we needed. It was one of those things where I have never been through the same or process. And to be completely honest with you, I think it jaded me from doing any other type of thing on big building renovations or anything because of the working relationship and the ability and the flexibility of how this came about. Now, preface that to say, all construction projects, I've never been in one that doesn't have problems. And, and we'll go forward from there, but I think we're off to a good start. In your packet, you have a lot of information. Most importantly, you guys have a sheet that looks like this that has twelve different options on it. And what that was is they gave their initial budget number and then they turned around, they said, hey, here is where the items we think we can shave off. What do you guys think? And so we went through those twelve and I looked at three of them intently that I didn't think hurt the integrity of the building or what we were trying to achieve. And we cut those out. The main one was we were going to put a concrete apron all the way around the big building, the engineering admin building. Basically it's not the fleet ba, building. We looked at that and just with that deduct alone, we can save a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. We still get our concrete aprons around all of our big buildings. There's just no interconnecting thing. But after looking at that and, and going through that, we felt that that was not a bad drawback. The next major one was the sumps in the fleet maintenance building. They were spec and they're part of my fault for not picking up on this little detail. They were spec as stainless steel. There's no reason for them to be stainless steel. If they're galvanized, we can save fifty-seven thousand dollars. We're also working with Groot House right now to go in and look at each one of them that are existing and see if they meet what is equivalent to an H S twenty rating, which basically equates to can a heavy truck go over it and not collapse it? If that's the case, then we can. Um, if that's the case, then we can save even more money. Um, but in order to boil that all down, um, Groot House with the three deducts that we had, um, that I think um are well deserved. Groot House came in slightly over what I had originally budgeted a year ago with this project. Um, our total budget was six million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. Groot House came in with those three deducts at six million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars, about fourteen thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three dollars over budget. Um, keep that in mind that within this packet that they gave us, they have a two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollar contingency. Um, and what that is used for is things that go wrong during the project, things that typically the owner needs that uh were oversight or something like that. So that is really um a true contingency, and most of those will be small. Um, you know, hopefully, there is no large ones. Any large ones will be like any other project. I'll bring those before you guys. Um, and to make sure that you guys are okay with that. But I think if we run this project correctly, um, and a lot of it relies on me and my staff to do that, um, we can save a ton of that money. In some of that C M R uh project, what I liked about this, how it was organized, is sometimes that split at the end of the project, um, the contractor gets some, but the owner gets some of it. This one, whatever we save in that comes back to the county. So I think that is a really, really good idea. Uh, the other thing that I want to make up is um August of next year um is when they think they can get everything done. We were hoping for June, but it's really going to be August next year. They looked at equipment procurement, um, all the different stuff, and it's really August twenty twenty-five. Um, with that, eighty, about eighty to eighty-five percent of the total project will come out in this physical year. Um, so that means about five point one, five point two million dollars of of the six point four million that we already budgeted. The nice thing about that is when we start working on our budgets in February and March, I should have a pretty hard number of what we need to continue forward for next year and be able to dial that down. So our carryover isn't, you know, exactly what it is, because at that point, it'll be window dressing, retainage, um, and some of the exterior work that we couldn't get done. So what my recommendation to you would be is to award or to amend the contract, the guarantee maximum price to Groot House Construction, the amount of six million, four and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars.
Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. Um, in in having spoken with Gene on this, um, we we went through all of the numbers and he he went through itemized um accounts with me on all of these. You know, I I just commend him. I I commend him for coming up with the concept, using this construction manager at risk concept. I think it will save us money in the long run. I think it's going to come in significantly less than what we're seeing here. I do like the fact that it will be done over the course of two fiscal years. Um, you know, obviously, we would have to budget uh approve this in this fiscal year. But certainly, it will be done over the two fiscal years. So I I just am in favor of this, and I appreciate what Gene has done to to bring this forward to us for that building.
Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just to kind of agree with you on uh not ever wanting to doing it any other way. Seen the college has done this, the hospital has done it. It's a, it's a pretty slick process.
It's not new.
No, but it's, but it works very well. So I appreciate your time and effort on this. I think it'll pay off.
Commissioner Toman.
It's big, big project. It looks like the end.
The end may be coming.
It is by um all accounts. If we get all of our grants and all the other projects up in Sweetwater County, there's thirty-eight million dollars worth of uh commercial construction going on right now. Sweetwater County, what uh if this goes, the library goes and all the Southwest Counseling, Sweetwater County will be doing about ten million of that.
So no other comments? That interpretation entertain a motion to approve amendment number one to the agreement for the Sweetwater County Public Works Combined Facility to establish guaranteed maximum price and contract time with a guaranteed maximum price of six million, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and a date of substantial completion for the project of August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
A motion by, was that Commissioner Slaughter?
Yes.
I would second that.
And a second by Commissioner Toman. Any more discussion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner Richard, now that you guys have passed that, just to let you guys know how fast this moves on, um, we will do do a pre-bid for all the um subcontractors on September twenty-sixth, which is a week. And uh bids will be due October sixteenth, so we can get rolling on this, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Legursky. That concludes that one. Commissioner West, come back, turn back the yellow. Oh, yours, Mr. Chairman. I don't think I screwed anything up.
Thanks for covering, Commissioner. My computer shut off. Stay with me. That should take us to item number seven under the tab C of the action presentation items, which is County Road Ninety, the American Methanol Road Vacation Discussion. We'll hand it back to Gene.
Uh, this is going to be really short. Um, after I put this on the agenda, um, it was like the owners had uh of C R of County Road Ninety-five LLC had. I don't want to say we're sharing a brain, but we probably were because they came in Wednesday and said, hey, can we have a meeting on this and kind of update the project? Um, they are still trying to work with Solway at the railroad crossing. Um, there is so many pipelines you guys can't even imagine. Some of the companies that the leases are under, um, you know, no longer exist, and they're trying to track down all of that. So um what I was originally going to do is just see where you guys were going, where you wanted on this, because we postponed this on May twenty-first. I want to make sure you guys knew we didn't drop the ball on it. Um, however, after meeting with those guys, I would like to extend this to give them another chance for like another six months. I'll come back and give you guys an update um on that, or we'll proceed, um, you know, with that, hopefully before that. But I think they need that much time um to be able to trace down all their leads.
Questions or feedback, Commissioners? Think that works for us?
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Gene. Next on the agenda is a break. Commissioners, do you need one or do you want to push through?
Keep going.
Keep going. We are a little bit behind, so we'll try and make up some time here. Next on the agenda is item number nine, which is the Southwest Counseling Service to discuss the Medication Assisted Treatment Agreement with Behavioral Health Division. With us uh this morning is CEO Linda Aker. Hey, good morning, Linda.
Good morning.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
No problem. Good morning. Um, Commissioners, I'm I'm Linda Aker. I'm the CEO of Southwest Counseling. And I'm here today to ask the county commissioners for a contract to be signed with the Department of Health Behavioral Health Division, and it is on medication assisted treatment. It is an evidence-based treatment. And what it is used for is medication is used for people who have an opioid or stimulant disorder. And in combination, they receive treatment, they have cognitive behavioral a treatment, whole health, which is looking at the entire person to make sure that, you know, you're addressing all the needs of the per- the person. We've had this contract for several years. There's fifty-five positions. They call them slots. Forty-five are for people who have an opioid addiction, ten are for stimulants. And it's a drawdown account where we have to expend the money to receive the money. But it is for the next year, seven hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. And it is an evidence-based program, and we have done really well with this program.
So it's just a continuation of years past, or is there additional funding that came about, or how does that work?
Um, Chairman West, there was additional funding, and that's the ten additional spots for stimulants.
Questions or comments, Commissioners? Well, the more the merrier when it comes to that. I think that's a great resource we should take advantage of. Commissioners, if there's no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the uh agreement with the Behavioral Health Division and the Wyoming Department of Health in the amount of seven hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars for the period of September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four through September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five, and authorize the chair to sign. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion's unanimous.
Yes, thank you so much. And my last note for you today is September is recovery month, and it has been a celebration for everyone who's in recovery. But not only for people in recovery, but for all the people that work at recovery in this county in the United States. But one of the things that we have a playful, um, we have elephants with an elephants outside our offices. And the elephants are the elephants in the room. And it is for the community to recognize that mental health and addiction are in our community. And what can we do about uplifting people in in these circumstances? So with that, I would tell you that their slogan is recovery, hope, and healing. And thank you for all the work and all your support to Southwest Counseling for all the people we serve.
Very good. Thanks, Linda. We appreciate you coming over. Next under tab C is item number ten, which is the Audit Engagement Letter with McGee, Hearn, and Pies. All right. I believe we have Clerk Lane that's going to be presenting that. Morning, Clerk Lane.
Thank you, Chairman West. Commissioners, I just had to verify something really quick. What I have today is the twenty twenty-four fiscal year twenty twenty-four engagement letter, audit engagement letter for uh McKee, Hearn, and Pies, um, that the chairman and I um signed via DocuSign. So this is a ratification of that document. Um, you may be aware that we do have a signed contract with McKee, Hearn, and Pies um that was signed on July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three for three years of audit. But each year, we have to have an engagement letter signed that explains what the obligations of the auditors and the county is. So nothing has changed. It's just the, it's time for that renewal to happen.
Very good. Thank you, Cindy. Any questions on the engagement letter, Commissioners?
I have a question.
Mr. Toman.
Not on the engagement letter, but will you be able to get additional assistance, or will you need it this year to get, prepare the audit like last year?
No, we don't need any additional assistance from um M H P. Um, we do have, um, I did have a little in the, well, I mean, in our budget that I put in to get the consulting from um Alexandra um out of Casper that we still ask her questions that we need done between us and the Treasurer's Office. Um, so we don't need as much as we did last year. So we are, um, so the M H P is not, we don't have any additional funding needing to go to them.
Additional comments or questions? Not at entertain a motion to ratify the approval of the audit engagement letter and allow the chairman to sign.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all who's in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Next under tab C is item number eleven. We've got the Seasonal Document Archive Assistant for the Attorney and Sheriff's Office. With us this morning is HR Director Gary McLean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Karen, County Commissioners. I think it's officially fall.
Yeah, I'd say.
So for the past uh several months, I've been working with the County Attorney's Office, trying to figure out a way to take the cases um that are still relevant, that are in paper files have that keep accumulating in in shelves and shelves in the basement of this building and and uh and also taking up office space and how to get those into an electronic format and in some cases disposed of. While we were trying to get a handle on the quantity of that uh task, um, the uh Joe Tomich, the under sheriff of the Sheriff's Department, had uh talked to me uh about some legislation that was passed last legislature's now statute, um, which requires the Sheriff's Department to take case files, old case files, cold case files, and which started off originally as just homicides, which would be very small, and then moved into sexual assaults and and those have to now be scanned, historic ones, some of them go back to the fifties, uh uploaded into a D C I database. Um, they have like a twenty-five page document that has to be used to index uh that information once it's scanned. And theoretically, D C I is going to do something about those cold case files. Um, so between those two, uh, we had a meeting uh approximately a month ago to sort of look at this issue, because I said, well, does it make sense to have one person doing a few hours here and another person there and then have to have duplicate equipment like scanning and stuff? I said, maybe can we com- combine those into one person? And um I think it was decided if we can do it, the Sheriff's Office is on a little more of a timeframe. There's actually a statutory timeframe uh for the project to be completed. Uh, we're not going to meet that timeframe, by the way. But there's a statutory timeframe, and um so we thought we tackled that first, and then maybe the County Attorney's Office. Um, so uh what we did is both offices went through uh and counted up the boxes and tried to come up with some reasonable estimates about how long it would take to scan them. And i- and if you've done this before, we've done it many times in various offices here, is, you know, you've got to take files apart. It means pulling staples, pins, taking them out of file binders, scanning them through reassembling. In some cases, if you're keeping that, if not, then calling them in, having disposed and shredded and 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 gotten rid of, which is, which is a positive thing also. But so on that end, that's one thing. On the Sheriff's Office, uh, you have the same issue. You're going to take some of the files apart. Some of them are handwritten. Some of them are notes. Some of them are media, like eight millimeter tapes or video cassette tapes or uh beta videotapes and so on and so forth. So those are going to have to be handled. So we tried to come up with sort of what a mean estimate would be to get these scanned. We came up with in total for both projects, about six months at thirty hours a day. Um, and uh, you know, under thirty hours a day. Um, specifically, uh, we don't want to have get into the issue of the A C A where we have to pay health insurance benefits. So that's um why we wouldn't do more than that. Um, and then, you know, the big biggest difficulty here is finding someone that would be trustworthy and capable and had maybe some orientation to this, because um they're going to have to know what they're looking at. So that that's going to be a little bit of a challenge. Joe and Amanda from the County Attorney's Office have been, you know, potentially looking at people uh that could do this. From my standpoint, there's a couple of really good aspects to this project. One is, one of the problems that's happened in the County Attorney's Office, which I've been through several times, is you go four years and they build up all this stuff, and they just don't deal with it. It's go on to the next county attorney. And this just starts filling shelves upon shelves upon shelves. The official record holder of much of the stuff is District Court anyway. But um for some of the the um the cases that may come up again, as happened with the Duke case and others, you want to have your documents leading up to those and the the uh strategies and things that that were involved in prosecuting those cases. But if if nobody deals with them, they just keep getting handed off and handed off and handed off, and we end up with hundreds of square feet consumed with boxes of irrelevant stuff. So applaud them for taking this on. Um, it's going to take a little bit of time. It may take less. Uh, we we don't, you know, it's really hard to guess because you don't know the content of each one of these cases. Um, this is not a budget request. I just want to be clear. Because of the vacancies that have existed and are still in field in the departments, they should have no trouble funding this out of their existing uh budgets, but it would be an F T E request for that period of time. So with that, I see uh Joe's here. If there's any questions, be happy to address them. I I think it's a good project to undertake at a good time uh for the offices. The thought was after the elections are are wrapped up that they would use the community room, which is a secure room and close to where the files are archived, um, to stage and scan at where we would have good security and control of the files. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them um at this time.
Thanks, Gary. Appreciate the explanation there. Um, the only question I have, you've covered most of them, would be it seems as though it's a little bit of a shared employee. So how does that work?
Yeah, so we have a couple of ways that we can do that. In the payroll system, we can have them um. allocated as like 30, 40. But right now, I think the simpler way is that we'll just have them report their time under two project codes. One a Sheriff's Code and one an Attorney's Code. Since they're not going to be co-mingling, that wouldn't be very good. They're going to do the SO's stuff and finish and then the County Attorney's Office. So we'll just have them actually record their hours and that'll be charged with the County Attorney's Office budget. Then they'll record their hours while they're working on the project portion that belongs to the sheriff and they'll charge that part to the sheriff's budget.
And I guess I just meant more on the supervisory role or the hiring or how does that work? Is it
Yeah, I mean
Sheriff's Office, employee under the Attorney's Office, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think we can talk about that, but I, I, they agree that they want to find somebody that they're both comfortable with.
Sure.
And, and they'll, for the respective parts of the project, because they have slightly different end goals, right? So the Sheriff's Department end goal is in part to get some of them archived, but also to get them up to the DCI database. So that portion of the project's going to probably fall under Michelle Hall, who's currently trying to get that project. She'll be the primary supervisor when they get to that point and point of contact. The County Attorney's Office primarily looking at archival. But there will be questions and that'll primarily respond to Amanda. So we'll find somebody that they jointly agree with and on the respective files, those people will be their direct supervisors, if you will, or points of contact, because they're the ones who've already done the scanning, like to see how long it takes, what's needed. And Michelle has been working with DCI on trying to figure out how to get this 25 page document for each cold case file uploaded along with the relevant data to the DCI database.
Any other questions, comments, Commissioners?
Just clarify the legislature mandated this but did not fund it. Is that?
Yeah, appreciate that clarification. So for your, for your edification, you can write this down. This is 91624. And I have a copy of the statute now. And it's, it's kind of interesting unless Joe knows more, it's not funded at our level or DCI. So I don't suspect that either is too happy about that. And, and I said, well, it can't be that many. Was it like 20 or 30? Which might have been the case if you're only talking about cold case file homicides. But it, when you start talking about sexual assaults and homicides, much, much higher. It's in the hundreds though. And then you have very big files of, over long periods of time sometimes. So I, I think they may have bitten off a little more than they can chew, but nonetheless, we're going to move. There's a flip side to this also for us, which is that it's, I, I will know in the end, but I'll be able to tell you the cubic feet of space that we free up. That we're just not going to have to have that kind of stuff around. So, so one of the things that's happened over time, we had huge percentage of the building, particularly on the bottom floor and in Justice Center tied up with this kind of stuff that nobody's touching. You know, it's just pure archive. So if we can get them into that format, yeah, it's going to cost us a little bit of money upfront. We're not creating more paper files. You know, all the records now are electronic we began with. So we should be able to make a real good permanent den in terms of the space that we're occupying. Heating, air conditioning within this building, just to archive records.
So you're allowed to destroy the paper?
Yeah, I mean, every record is a little bit different. And so the Sheriff's Office is working on a specific record retention policy so that complies with the state. The County Attorney's Office and John have already done that. So they have a plan of which ones have to be kept, how long and which ones can be destroyed. But, but the vast majority of the paper files at the end are going to be shredded and destroyed.
Additional comments? All right. If not, entertain a motion to approve the hiring of a seasonal document archive assistant for the Attorney and Sheriff's Office as presented. So move. Motion by Commissioner Jones. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay.
Thanks.
Thanks Gary. Appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the Solid Waste Disposal District Number One Board Appointment. We have had a resignation and Mr. Justin Bryant and as such, we have Jean Legursky, who has applied to fill the unexpired term. Any questions on this vacancy Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
I'd like to move to appoint Jean Legursky to fill the unexpired term of Justin Bryant on the Solid Waste District Number One Board.
Have a motion to appoint Jean Legursky to fill the unexpired term through March 1st, 2027. By Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Slaughter, I think. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Richards.
Apparently Mr. Legursky has stepped out, but apparently he has too much time on his hands. But I, I commend him for, for offering to, to step in.
You know, we appreciate that Jean. Some of these boards are difficult to fill and I think that's one that his expertise will definitely be beneficial on with different heavy equipment operations as such. So much appreciated. All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion is unanimous. Next on the agenda is item number 13, which is the Sweetwater Economic Development Coalition SCDC update. And with us just barely still this morning, not quite afternoon yet, we are behind. So sorry about that. It's Kayla McDonald, the Economic Development Specialist. Good morning Kayla.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners. I have before you a presentation that we have put together to encompass everything from basically up to the first of this year up to where we are right now. I want to start with the first page and talk a little bit about what we did with this. We brought in the Wyoming Business Council last April and we started a strategic planning session. And this was a free service, which I do want to get that out to other communities and businesses in Sweetwater County. They do have an actual expert that will go through and help you develop a strategic plan and master plan. And that's a research that's free through the state. So we brought in Amber Power and through that process, we identified our three major initiatives for economic development. Sweetwater County being business retention and expansion, marketing and communications and business recruitment. I'll touch a little bit on business retention first because we made this our number one priority for going forward with economic development. We felt this is a major component to what we're doing in Sweetwater County for making sure that our businesses are taking care of our, our current established businesses, which eventually leads into expansions. So our business retention program was launched in May. We went through the process of putting me through a training through Business Retention and Expansion International, where I obtained my business retention expansion coordinator certificate, which helped develop the program for us. Gives you a great overview of how to develop a functional business retention program. And so I did that. And since we've started doing this, we have conducted 16 site visits and we are growing those numbers. It's hard to track people down during the summertime, so we are hitting it hard this fall and we've got several on the list coming up. Just a few things to just note from these discussions that we're having with businesses in Sweetwater County is there is a huge concern about how these upcoming expansions are going to affect business in Sweetwater County. Everything from where can I send my employees to get workforce training? How can I obtain funding for these trainings? So we've had a lot of discussions with workforce development and I will give props to the state for their local office here, getting out even through the chambers and getting out and educating businesses on that platform as well. Those workforce training grants are crucial for any future workforce training and development and expansions in Sweetwater County. I will also note that we were invited out to tour a local previously oil and gas company that has now taken on a major contract with Project West to start putting together equipment for drilling. And so we went out in partnership with the Southwest Manufacturing Partnership to sit down and talk about initiatives that they're looking for in the future for their workforce. And we identified that they are basically 15 welders short for this project. So in discussions, we identified that they had no idea that Western Wyoming Community College has a service area that encompasses manufacturing industrial technology. So in having these discussions, we have set up two visits for them to come up to the college and tour the facility and understand what the curriculum is up there. Along with this company, we are also working with Pacific Soda to address some of their workforce development needs for the future of their project. And they too will be conducting site visits with this community college and their staff and faculty to address what their needs are for workforce. And so to me, those are some huge wins for our BRNE program, getting out there and learning more about what our businesses are facing as far as challenges and what they are looking for as far as resources. We'll go into the goals for the BRNE program. One thing that we have had some requests for in the past, we put together a meet the experts program. And this was a program that I put together as part of National Economic Development Week. And we were asked to do something like that again, that would be getting all of our experts in everything from finance to marketing, down to even just reviewing a business plan and getting them all in the room so that startup businesses have a place to go and meet these experts. So this is something that we'll be looking at doing probably starting this fall and working into the winter time. We'll continue to do our site visits and working with the Western Wyoming Community College staff and getting more and more businesses in front of them so that they know what the resources are. Marketing communications for us was a second initiative that we put together. We felt that we needed to get our messaging out to the community. And by doing that, we brought in a intern from Western, who we are very proud to say that we have contracted with. And she has started a business since working as an intern for SEDC. So she is doing all of our social media and marketing website maintenance. And she put together this beautiful project and I'm very proud of the work that she's done. And she's learning more and more about her community. And I'm probably going to at some point bring her before you guys and have her present her marketing campaign that she is putting together. So very excited to have her on board. The monthly radio show, we've brought that back in with Johnny K. Chairman West has participated in that. We've had members of our board go in with Johnny and talk about some of the projects they're doing, just to highlight. And we've also brought in different partners. This week, we will have Southwest Wyoming Manufacturing Partnership on there to talk about what their initiatives are and get them a little bit more face time in the community as well. Goals for our marketing and communication for the future is to develop an e-newsletter. This is something that I have tasked Lindsay, who is our contract employee to do. And she is looking at building that out. That'll be something that we can get more information out, not just through our social media platforms. And she is working on that social media campaign. And then through our business retention program, we would like to get out and highlight the businesses that we've been in front of and met with. You might have seen, if you follow our Facebook, that we recently were out at Legend Services and Integrated Well Service. And we highlighted some of what they're doing. So continuously giving those shout outs to our businesses and get more information out to them. Included in the packet is some analytics. I won't go through all of that. You can read that at a later time. But that just gives you an overview of where we're at with social media, our Instagram and Facebook page. Our business recruitment for this year, we have responded to seven Wyoming Business Council leads, which has been everything from manufacturing, energy, production. And our most recent one came across yesterday and that is something that is a, a new factory that they're looking at to do some green energy production. So we'll be looking at that and hopefully responding to that if we have the necessary properties that they're looking for. Since the start of the summer, we were asked by the Wyoming Business Council to come and join them in a project that is a statewide initiative called Insight Consulting. They did a prior consulting project with other communities around the state last year. And Sweetwater County was not selected. So they came back to us and said, hey, you guys have some really good property and vacant buildings still in your inventory. We'd really like for you to, to select one. So we have selected the former Halliburton Building. And a little bit about this project is we went through and we identified everything down to what a site selector would request in a request from a community to be able to go out and actively recruit a company in. So we did everything from what the size of water line is, gas lines, utilities, proximity to markets, proximity to the IAD corridor. Provided this long, probably 20 some page document back to them on information. And what they're going to do is come back to us and give us some information on how to go about recruiting, what types of businesses would fit into this facility. And they're going to come out and do a tour in November and sit down with our team with SEDC and basically coach you on how to become fam tours and go out and show site selectors what your community has the ability to showcase. We've done several of those in real time and we had Kel-Tec. We did a great job of showing them our area. Obviously that landed a company. So we're, we're excited to actually work with the site selection agency to get those coaching opportunities before us. So that is insight. That's something that we will be doing later this fall. As you're aware, we have partnered with UNA County to do a comprehensive economic development strategy. We are starting that right now. We are currently working. We have two meetings set a month. Chairman, sorry, Commissioner Richards is joining us. And as well as our Chairman Mark Cowan and Eric Bingham and I as staff are working with Christina to start this process. We're excited to work with UNA County. So we're just in the, the early stages of this. And the end goal for that will be for us to identify needs for Sweetwater County. And I think that'll eventually tie into where we're at with our recruitment pieces. We hope to have a nicely packaged recruitment package that come out of the SiteSeer project and comprehensive economic development strategy. And just a couple of things to highlight for statewide involvement. I was asked to serve along with Chairman West and Commissioner Jones to do the Wyoming, the Governor's BLM Resource Management Plan Task Force. So we had some involvement in that. I said on the Wyoming Chamber of Commerce, this is a new group that is being built out of Cheyenne. Their Board of Directors, Wyoming Economic Development Association Board of Directors. And then I would like to also invite you all, we will have the Wyoming Working Together Conference here, October 7th through the 9th at the Events Complex. This is everybody from the Main Streets to the Economic Development into the chambers. And we all have one big conference and Rock Springs gets to host that this year. And if you're interested, let me know and I can get you an agenda. There's going to be some great talking opportunities with other economic development professionals, elected officials. And we have some great agenda items for presentations as well. And with that, I will take any questions and stand for anything else.
Thanks Kayla. Appreciate the report. Questions or comments Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Richards.
Quick question on BRNE. What criteria do you use to determine which business you go visit?
So what I've done so far is a lot of the small businesses with Green River having no Main Street Director right now or any kind of person in that role, we've had a lot of interest from our local businesses in the downtown. So I have met with several of the downtown Green River businesses, a lot of the small businesses. Southwest Manufacturing Partnership has offered to give us a list of some of the manufacturing groups that they're part of their group. So we'll start going out and doing that. I want to thank Jessica Evans, who's on our board for joining me in that visit that we had with Integrated. But there's really no criteria. I just, I want to learn about everybody's business and I have a couple coming up that I've never heard of. And so I'm getting out with, I'd like to reach out to Mandro's Painting, find out what they're doing. I'm going to meet with Bodic Electric this week, learn about what they're doing, see if there's anything they need. I'm sure at some point they're going to be tapped into for resources with these projects. So really no criteria. So we welcome anybody who would like to sit down and even show our, our group. I've opened it to our board to come out and tour and see what's out there and, and learn. So hopefully that answers your question.
Mr. Toman.
Who is on your board again?
Yeah, yeah. So you guys have appointed Commissioner Richards and you have Jessica Evans. And she is representing small business. And then you have, I don't know if Mark's in here or not, but Mark Cowan as well. And then the city of Green River has Marty Corolo and Reed Clevenger. And Rock Springs is John Hay and Blaine Tate. Blaine Tate. And Blaine represents real estate.
And your chairman is Mark?
Yes.
Okay. On the site visits, where do you provide? So if we wanted to see who you've been visiting, where would we go to see that?
Sure. So I have a database and we input all of the surveys. We go out and do a survey with them. And I can give you that information once we input that into the database that we have.
Any other questions, comments, feedback Commissioners? Well, thanks Kayla. I know it's kind of been a whirlwind, especially with all the economic activity that's I guessed on the I guess on, on the horizon within Sweetwater County, and it's probably been a little bit confusing for. Your role when there's, you know, BRNE and then there's the. Unknowns with the housing market and certainly businesses concerned about. Maintaining and, and I guess retaining their employment with these projects come forward. So it's. Important to grow as long as it's controlled growth. And I think. These efforts with the BRNE and the different recruitments will continue to support that. So we appreciate the update and. We're coming up to let us know what you're all about lately.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much. Next on the agenda is the memorandum of understanding discussion for the Dry Creek Trona Project. With us this now afternoon, Land Use Director Eric Bingham.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. So before you, we're here to discuss and I heard in. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Richards stated a little bit about what's going on as far as the Dry Creek. Trona Mine Project, which is a huge project. And we are on the clock and it's ticking. And so there's some things that we have to do according to the rules and requirements of. Department of Environmental Quality and Industrial Siding Division. So. Just so you know where we are as far as status, it's a five billion dollar project, two point three of it is material costs. With, as Commissioner Richards stated, under the two point seven six percent, which was what it used to be, would have been a sixty four point three in impact fees. Legislature reduced that to one point five for this size of project with, so there's thirty four point nine available is what we're looking at. As far as the numbers we're using, there's going to be an average workforce with their families of two thousand four hundred and thirty nine people during this project. With a peak of four thousand three hundred and ten at month twenty. So when you're looking at twenty twenty six, we're looking at a lot of people in Sweetwater County. This does not even include Project West numbers. Which I believe were a thousand seven average. So that's a lot of people. That's over three thousand average people. That we're looking at in Sweetwater County. So. This, as far as the application goes, it is showing the impacted area as Sweetwater County. Now, we did receive a letter. From the Department of Environmental Quality, industrial siding that included. Uinta and Lincoln County. So they were included in the area of influence. So. U N A County has filed for an entry of appearance, so they will be participating. We are looking at holding our MOU meeting on September twenty seventh because we have to have an MOU signed by October fourth. So we're under a very tight time crunch as far as that goes. So what we're looking at today. Is to request a motion to approve the. I also, I sent out a party of interest letter that would come from Sweetwater County if that could be approved today. And then. Also granting the authority for Commissioner Richards and Commissioner Slaughter to negotiate the final terms. Of the MOU with local governments related to the Dry Creek Trona Project. Just due to the, the timing of it, it's on September twenty seventh and it's before the Board of County Commissioner meeting. So. I'm, that's what I have, Mr. Chairman, here to answer any questions.
Thanks, Eric. Appreciate your work on the preparation of this. As I mentioned earlier. It's fast. It's a quick timeline. It's a stressful timeline, especially when you're trying to incorporate different cities and counties and. I think Sweetwater's done a great job taking the charge there, especially in the middle of the RMP and everything else you have on your plate. So I certainly appreciate the efforts with them. Questions or comments, commissioners? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve of the party of interest letter that has been prepared before you, along with. Granting Commissioner Richards and Slaughter the authority to negotiate the final terms of the MOU with the local governments related to the Dry Creek Trona Project as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Tomlin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just as a, also a reminder, I, we did receive. An email that stated that the camera project, which is the Natrium facility, will. That deadline's going to be November fifteenth, so they're going to be submitting an application. Soon, so they, they'll, they'll be back to back hearings on impact assistance. So. And, and then the sage grouse protest will be during that period. So. That's that, Mr. Chairman.
Is Commissioner Slaughter going to take on the Natrium one? Is that?
Feels like he, you know, he's stuck his foot out there, so he might as well.
I think that our current chair of those has done a great job. So I would be more than happy to follow him again. I'll follow him into battle.
All right. This is going to bring us along to our final item before the executive session, which is an update of the Resource Management Plan, RMP Protest. We'll hand it back to Eric. I believe Danielle has joined us online as well. Good morning, Danielle. Sorry to keep you waiting there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So yes, thank you, Ms. Danielle Ben Court for joining us today. The three of us have been meeting weekly and we've been going over a draft letter. It was not ready for prime time today. We are looking and speaking with Danielle today, we're looking at having that draft done by the end of today. So when I do have that done. We will forward that to, I'll forward that to you, the commissioners, so that you can review it. We're under a very tight time crunch. Obviously next Monday. We have to have that in by, so we're looking at filing the protest on Monday. Which is, I think Commissioner Richards predicted, and he is correct. We are right up to the final minute. I'm just trying to get everything we can, legal arguments, all that in that protest. So in speaking with Ms. Ben Court, she will be the one filing the, the protest with exhibits. Also, we have the ability. With her being in Colorado, the protests actually get filed in Lakewood, Colorado, and she has offered to file. Their office to file a physical copy of that also. Want to make sure that that's okay with the commissioners moving forward. So because of the timing of everything in the tight time crunch. I would like to request of the commissioners that we have a special meeting. We plan on, once we have that draft today. Myself, John and Danielle will meet and on Thursday and go over everything in there just to make sure. We have everything we need in there. I need a special meeting sometime between then and Monday. For the commissioners to approve. I will be out of town this week, but I will return on Monday. I can certainly, there's no issue with it. Attend virtually and John will be here physically and then Danielle virtually on Friday. Probably the afternoon is better so that we have a little bit of time in the morning if there's anything more that we have to do. Thing about Friday that would be good, the pros of that would be if there's anything we need to include, the commissioners feel we need to include in there. We can do that and then have another special meeting or you just say if this is included. Depending on whatever motions made at the Friday meeting, we have the option of holding one on, on Monday and not cutting it too close. So just wanted to throw that out there with everybody's scheduling. I appreciate it. Wanted to throw that to you, Mr. Chairman, and see, see what the commissioners' thoughts are.
Openings on Friday, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I will be traveling Friday on and off of airplanes, but depending on the time, I could jump on virtually.
I believe Commissioner Richards is as well, as I recall. Mr. Slaughter?
I'm available.
Mr. Tomlin?
I am available.
Available Friday. I have the same problem on Monday. I can probably do it virtually, but I will be in Salt Lake City. So. I do like the idea of trying for Friday.
Okay.
That way, if we do need more time, we can go ahead and, you know, post the eight hour notice. Fridays so that we have time over the weekend to finalize on Monday. I can be available Monday afternoon.
Okay, not a problem with Chairman. Appreciate it.
I think we'll have a quorum. Hopefully we can include Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Slaughter on Friday if you both are open to that. Is there a time that would work best? Do you know?
I would have to pull up my plane tickets to. For sure.
Somewhere fun. Do you want to share?
Mr. Chairman, I'll be driving, so as long as I know what time I can make sure I have service and.
What were you thinking, Eric, as far as afternoon timeline?
Danielle, I can't remember what time works for you on Friday in the afternoon.
I'm open in the afternoon on Friday, so anytime.
We will have a draft to read before Friday then.
End of the day. I'll send it to you.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Absolutely.
Well, has it been fun?
What'd you say, John?
Smiling, Danielle, smiling. I'm sure you've been having a great time.
It's always fun.
Well, Commissioner Jones is, is looking. I, what is with the, what do you call Lakewood, Colorado? Is it a regional office? Is that why it's requested to be turned in there? Why Colorado when we're dealing with Wyoming issue here?
Yeah, I think it's because that's where the regional office is located and where that goes. Or maybe just to their center for where things, if you mail. That's where it is, where it goes to as well. But in addition though, we can submit it online. So they also like you to submit it through their online portal. But I know we always generally feel more comfortable. Knowing that they get it by giving them a physical hard copy as well.
I'm going to be a pineal at the BLM Resource Advisory Committee and they're going to give an update on, that should be interesting on Wednesday.
Well, I appreciate your willingness there, Danielle.
Between, excuse me, between one and three, if all goes well, I'm available.
I was going to suggest one o'clock or maybe a buffer.
I'm supposed to land at twelve forty, so that's why I said one, just in case.
You one thirty, two o'clock? What, what do you think here?
Should only take a few minutes, I would think.
Yeah. Does one give you enough time or do you want to plan on?
Say one thirty, just.
Okay. You good with that, Eric? Good with that, Danielle?
Yes.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. And then, Mr. Chairman, oh, go ahead.
You're good. I'm just making sure we had a consensus here. Go ahead, Eric.
It's clear claimed, so we're good. You'll advertise that. All right. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we appreciate as always your dedication to getting that done. I know it's been. Long. Process. I'll leave it at that. There's a few other adjectives that I'll leave out, but it seems like it's just part of the norm with sage grouse and industrial siding on the horizon. So. Thanks to the team for the continued professionalism, helping us push back on it.
Not a problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your support too, and Commissioner Jones for reaching out to me and. Providing feedback too, so appreciate it.
All right. We'll see you Friday at one thirty.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle. The last item, commissioners, is an executive session to discuss potential litigation. It is anticipated that action likely will be taken upon coming out. With that, entertain a motion to enter into executive for the purpose of potential litigation. Motion by Commissioner Richards. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. All in favor, say aye. Pose nay. Motion's unanimous and we are now.